Just kind of as, so it's page 14 of this section. And then we'll go back to the overall operating budget with Krista.
Page 14.
Okay. So I was going to ask Jody to go ahead and walk through his operations department and have him kind of talk about the changes that he would like to make within his areas of responsibility. Jody, if you want to kick it off?
Sure, sure, I'd be happy to. So, a couple of changes that we're interested in making. One is in food service. And in talking with Sarah in terms of her vision for the future, we very quickly landed upon trying to reorganize that management structure in food service. One of the things that we think is critical is an assistant director position. Somebody that could team up with Sarah in terms of laying out her vision for the future. Over the course of years, you know, Beverly and I have been great friends and she's had a, run an awesome department we've all emulated to try and get to that level. But she always had in Sarah, basically, an assistant director that wasn't getting paid for it. And so with Sarah being promoted to director, one of the things I thought was critical is to look at that position as being something that we should bring on. In terms of looking at that overall organizational structure with her management team, Sarah felt very strongly that she could give up two of the supervisor positions, the area supervisor positions, to support funding the assistant director and that moving forward, that would be the appropriate structure. So, at the end of the day, what this does is it gives up two of her area supervisors, but brings on an assistant director at a little higher rate. As you know, or at least I think you know, that over the course of the last several years, one of the things we've had trouble doing is attracting really qualified people into those area supervisor positions. So she's had a bunch of vacancies. So, at the end of the day, I think what this does is aligns the pay so that we can get a real quality individual into Sarah's team to help her out moving forward. So, that's really the thrust in terms of the food service reorganization. And again, at the end of the day, it saves us some money in Sarah's budget overall, which is going to be critical moving forward.
So just a quick point of clarification. It's an area supervisor and a nutrition educator. It's not two area supervisors.
Correct.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Yes. So, now in terms of facility services, one of the things that we're trying to do, as we look at across the operations division, in every one of the departments, we have at least one bookkeeper, sometimes two. And what they do across the departments is very, very similar. You know, they process POs, make sure payments are moving through, make sure budgets in the right places. And as I looked across all of the departments, one of the things I saw is that there are, again, every department kind of heads and flows in terms of its workflow over the course of the year. So I think in terms of what those positions do, it would really behoove us to have somebody who oversees all of those positions throughout all the operations division. Because again, we can consolidate, we can be more efficient about how we do things, we can move money more efficiently between the needs of what we need to do to take care of our customers. So, what I'm proposing that we do is we are going to eliminate a couple of positions in facility services. And what we're going to do is create a new position, which is an SSP 10, to go over there and fill in. We have Patty Yakely who's retiring. They're going to go in and help fill in for that position once Patty retires. So we'll be adding an SSP 10 bookkeeper to facility services. And then we will be deleting the business manager out of facility services, but creating a overall person to oversee all of the, all of the bookkeepers within the operations division. And at the end of the day, what we do by deleting some positions and adding these two others, we're saving money in the facilities budget. But I think operationally, we'll be able to move money more efficiently, be able to do more with less. And again, I think that it's very, it's very important that at the end of the day, you know, I think one of the things that was very important this year is we embarked upon the zero-based budgeting process with every department. I think that was uniquely important, all right? That got us to the position that we saw, exactly what we're doing, and defined our operations and budgeted for what we actually needed to do. This position is going to enhance that because at the end of the day, we're not going to pinch a whole money. We're going to look at it from a district perspective and say, what do we need to do to fulfill the needs of the customer at the minimized cost? And then how can we make sure we're using resources effectively between all departments to do that? And so this new position would allow us to do that across all operational departments. At the end of the day, we're giving up a few positions, adding a few, and it saves the district some money. And I think long-term becomes a better operational scenario for us to be able to minimize our costs. So I don't know if there are any questions?
Did you want to talk about human resources?
Is there any on the facilities moves? Because I know those are, there's quite a few there.
So Jody, can you get a little closer to your microphone?
I'm sorry. Sure. Is that better?
Eric.
He's using, yeah.
So my, my questions are more globally in nature. So, to preface it, when Superintendent Bowden came on, one of the first things he did was he put a stamp of approval on the organization. And he made some organizational changes that he had been contemplating until he became superintendent. And so my question is, is since we're beginning getting a superintendent relatively quickly, why would you, and it's not uncommon for every board meeting that we get, we have, you know, additions of staff, ins traction of staff. I mean, why wouldn't we present this to the new superintendent, once they came aboard, so they can put their stamp of approval? I would just hate to go through a massive reorg through all these different districts and then a superintendent comes on, literally, you could probably almost measure in weeks now, of, and then him wanting to change it back. Why wouldn't you just wait 60 days to present it to them? If it truly has no budgetary impact, if it has no net budgetary impact, why wouldn't you allow that new superintendent the ability to look at that? I'm assuming that the person who hits, you know, we're hiring, is going to be ready and hit the ground running. So I have other questions besides that, but my first question is, why aren't we waiting for the new superintendent?
So normally, reorganizations are done during the budget process time. So, right now, especially for Denise, I know for one, a lot of these people have been working two jobs, waiting for the budget time to come about for them to put in their requests. We don't normally let people reorg, or as far as I know, we've never let in my entire history with the district where departments are allowed to reorganize during the course of the school year. It's during, only during the budget time. So, these people have been patiently waiting to submit their reorg requests for the budget cycle. The new superintendent isn't due to be appointed with a contract until the day that you are also adopting the budget. So, to bring, and if we're anticipating this to be anybody from the outside, they aren't going to know our overall organizational structure or how things operate. So these people would technically most likely have to wait an entire other year in order to be able to make their changes that they'd like to make, which means that, you know, Denise would have to continue doing two jobs without the support she's looking for. And Steve is also asking to have a change made for him because he's absorbed two jobs, being both middle and high school. And Jody has somebody as an acting, as a director-level position in his department. So he's still doing a lot of that work. So the idea was to provide a little bit of relief for all of these higher-level administrators who are doing two jobs and do it during the normal budget season, which is when it's normally done.
So, in these reorgs, it, I, you and I, I have a slight disagreement about whether it saves money or not. I agree that it's budget-neutral, but I think that it actually will cause us to spend more money, just like as if you would have hired some of these empty spots that caused you to expend more money. But putting that off to the side, we're talking about on this spreadsheet deleting positions. Well, we have to vote to, so let's say we delete a position, a director's position, okay? Will it come in front of the board as a separate new business slide on them, if that ever comes back?
If you were to ever add that position back into the budget, it would be during the budget process.
But will it be a separate vote, or will it be, because we get the position control where it says, this many people in administration. We don't, in the budget process, we don't see how many each individual.
You see it in the organization chart.
Well, we don't always get the organization chart at every budget. I mean, but to specifically say, to highlight, hey, we're adding a directors here, we're adding a particular person. When you're, when you're giving an org chart of a 5,000-person organization without highlighting this particular person has been added. So, for example, today at our workshop, we have new business and we're going to be adding these new positions.
Those are job descriptions.
Yes, but then will people eventually get those new jobs? We're going to advertise those jobs.
Which is what we're discussing today.
Eric, as long as the position is taken off of the organizational chart, that position can no longer be filled unless it comes to the board.
I'm questioning this, how does it come in front of the board? Does it come?
Put back on the organizational chart.
Only during the budget time.
My question is, how does it come in front of the board? Is it highlighted to us, a particular person, or is it going to be part of a 5,000 person?
No, it's highlighted.
Well, it's just that we're talking about here.
It's awful hard to go through the org chart and figure out what's been added and what's, I like this Excel spreadsheet.
That's why it was summarized.
Right, I like that. But to memorize org charts from year to year and sit there with org charts to see who's been added and who's been deleted is not the most efficient way.
But your budget is a permanent document that's adopted and posted on your website. So, until you make a change to that. I mean, it's not, you guys tell me if I'm wrong, but in the history, my history with the district, we don't add a position without bringing it to the school board to add it because it's not part of the approved, adopted budget of positions. If the position exists in our current allocation of positions, then yes. The only time we would add a position would be a teaching position because we ended up with more students at a particular school.
But it seems to me that when you, when you say delete, does delete mean not fund? Or does delete mean gone? It's no longer in the system?
It's not, it's not funded and it's not an active position in position control. So if you were to run all of the active positions in position control, if, so say Denise's reorganization is approved, her director-level position is being removed from the budget. So it won't be funded. And if you run her org chart or you run her cost center out of our position control system, that position will not come up. It's not going to show up and say vacant. It's not going to show up.
So the way, the way it would, the position would ever be reactivated, I assume deactivated is reactivated, would be, there would be an org chart that would be in our budget and then that position would be in that org chart. And by virtue of proving the budget with that org chart, we would be reactivating that position. Is that what you're saying?
But we don't necessarily add positions other than for student enrollment without bringing them to the board.
But I'm trying to figure out how you're going to bring it in front of the board.
Yes, just like what I'm doing right now.
Right, so if you, if you added that director that got deactivated and you're going to reactivate it, the reactivation process.
Comes to the board.
It'd come in front of the board and be coming in front of the board by being on an org chart?
No.
No, it would be separately stated?
It would be discussed like we're discussing the budget right now.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
Hold on.
Bridgette. I had actually a similar question, so two, two things. I initially agree with the thought of, we're about to hire a new superintendent in the reorg, but I also recall my conversations of even the interim of saying, are you willing to make this necessary decisions to move us forward because we didn't know how long it would be? And understanding that we have, I'm kind of on two sides here. But I think there's some efficiencies that are built in here. But I do, I did have the same question that Eric did about, because I know I brought this up with the prior superintendent about deleting positions because my worry, and I think you explained it right, because I recall when the, when the police department came forward, those were new positions. They were brought forward to new, to new business now, but they were new job descriptions and at the same time, they're a position. Is that a fair?
Yes, so the job descriptions that are on your agenda for this afternoon are contained in these reorgs that we're going to discuss during the workshop. So, for them to be able to be, if the board agrees to the proposed changes, in order for them to be able to hire them in July, or probably post them in June for a July hire date, they need to have a job description in place or we can't hire.
So with that, that's where I think, and in my, the way I was thinking of it is that, but why, if you're really doing, and it's an annual reorg, right? Why wouldn't we delete formally those positions just as we add new positions? Because they're job descriptions, right? So we don't need that other job description because we now have reorganized the organization.
Except for a couple of these job descriptions were taken from previous ones and kind of called into one. So, I mean, I.
See, I'm just saying, because that way it creates some balance because I.
They are removed from position control, which is the overarching document. Our job descriptions are not the document we use to control positions. We use a position control system within our.
So they each have a code or something?
They all have their own unique identifier. And so, within a cost center, you could have, because again, we have, you know, many, many teaching positions. So if I removed a fourth-grade teacher, because there wasn't a need for fourth-grade teachers, I'm not deleting the teacher job description. So, so again, I think that's why.
But that comes like on a personnel report. Correct, I mean, we're adding a new.
But that's also a part of your budget process because the personnel allocations are determined during the budget process. So the number of teachers at a school, the number of guidance counselors, those are all determined during the budget process based upon anticipated enrollments at every school.
So in the event you needed to add teacher administrator position mid-year, what would happen?
Then mid-year, we would then do an amendment to the budget to add those positions within position control, or we would monitor the number of teaching units that have been allocated to determine if we've filled them all. Because if I have, so another thing is, I don't want to unnecessarily inflate the budget. So if I have 3,000 teaching positions and 2,950 of them are filled and I need to add a teaching unit at one location, it's more than likely it's because there isn't a need for one at another location, it has remained vacant. So I don't want to unnecessarily inflate the budget for an additional teaching unit. So that's all monitored by position control in the budget office.
Right, and I think that, well, if, I don't know if I'm saying similar things or not, but that's where my question was, again, I think every year, and I do recall like in our big budget, we have an org chart. I don't know that it goes down to every granular level, but certainly at the high executive and administrative level. But if we're adding, we're reorganizing for efficiency, which I think this illustrates, the question is, where's the control? And I understand, like, if it's not, my point is, if we're not doing it anymore, why wouldn't we just delete it? Or, and my, what I've heard before is that, because you want this bank and if you want to bring it back, that way you can just pull from those, and it's the job descriptions. I understand I'm using two things, but they are somewhat.
So there are many processes and internal controls in place for us in order to make sure positions are not overfilled, or positions that aren't approved do not get filled. So, in the event I wanted to fill a position, I go through this process of what's called a fill vacancy request. 99% of the time, we go to a hiring freeze, so to fill any position after the five-day count requires cabinet approval anyway.
So cabinet approval?
Correct.
It doesn't come back to the board in that sense? If it was in the middle.
But it's, no, it's a vacancy of an approved position to fill.
Cora, okay.
I mean, for any position. So then, what happens is the person enters a, enters a document in the system that then goes through an entire approval process. It goes through the, to the budget department, it goes into the HR department, it goes to the cost center head, it goes to the executive director. So it goes through all these, that's just to post a job for, you know, we want to hire you. Then once you.
For a vacancy that was previously approved by the board.
Correct, so you cannot enter one for any job that's not approved or active within our position control system. So you can't even enter it, it won't let you.
Okay.
So then, so say two people want to hire a job, or they've convinced somebody to activate a job, which would never happen, but in the event it could, then that goes through. Then what happens is then that position also goes through a whole other process once you've decided who it is you want to hire. And it goes through an entire hiring process within HR and a personnel transaction request that also has many layers of approval on it. So with as many eyes as that are looking at it, if the position is not an approved position within someone's cost center, somebody is going to see it and know it, first of all. But the buck usually stops in the budget office. So first of all, you can't post a position that isn't active. If somehow a position is activated inappropriately and somebody tries to fill it, then it gets stopped on the backend. So, I'm very confident that we aren't posting any positions out there that aren't board-approved.
And then in the event somebody wanted to reactivate one of these.
That would have to be approved by the board.
Then it would be brought through to the board and.
And most likely, we'd make them wait until the next budget cycle.
Well, that, because that's the other thing, most of these are annual, I mean, we, which we can get into the conversation of, you know, the annual contracts for, in the administrative level, but that's the other part of the change over. I think from an efficiency standpoint, I support it. I just wanted to make sure, again, similar to what Eric said, is if we add them, I want to make sure that the controls are in place that you don't, you can't just, it looks great that it's efficient, but then if those positions are still.
No, I agree with you, yeah. I mean, I don't want to be, I don't even want it to be next year that we're coming back and saying, oh, we need another director position. That shouldn't be what happens. That's what the thoughtful process, this has been going on for a number of months where we've been pushing back and having conversations on what it is that they should organize. I mean, I know that Ron's group has met at his, at the college for a long time discussing all of the options and, and then he's come to cabinet, we've had lots of conversations around. So this has been going on since January, you guys, I would think?
But that's the, and I guess that's where the other, the flip side of it is, when you do have, and this is not to anyone in particular, but when you have a new leadership coming in, there's a style and there's a structure and what have you. And that's the only part where it's like, do we wait? But you brought up a very good point, that, that it's past the budget process and then in the, so hypothetically, in the event come August, September, the new superintendent wanted, if we didn't do anything, and they wanted to add or change, they would be able to do such, the way you just explained it. I don't want any of our staff doing, like, what you explained, I mean, where they're holding on.
I mean, I don't, I don't know that that's ever happened before. I guess technically it could, but normally it's done during the budget process.
Correct. I'm just trying to like, understand the, and again, I.
I mean, I think a lot of these positions aren't necessarily at the level, I mean, whether we have an SSP 6 or an SSP 10 in facilities, I don't know that that's where the, your next superintendent is going to focus their attention. Whether or not Suzie DeBose works a 12-month calendar, an 11-month calendar plus, you know, 20 extra duty days, because she's technically still working a 12-month calendar, is something that that's what the next superintendent is going to be looking at. So, I mean, it's, you know, totally at the will of the board what we want to do, but I was just bringing these forward because this is what these individuals have asked. And I have them all on the screen so that they can provide you the justifications if you want to hear them. If you don't, that's fine too.
No, no, I just wanted to clarify that. I understood it because I had the same question about delete and just to say, oh, this looks like we're going towards a more lean approach, but.
Let me just, she's the position control expert, not me. So, can we delete these positions out of position control? Or can we just inactivate them? I think what happens is if you delete them, you lose all the history.
Correct.
So for example, yes.
It's, it's either active or it's closed. And it's impossible to post a position or put anybody in a position once it's closed. For job descriptions, as far as deleting a job description when something happens, a lot of the times, not in a, you know, director position, but like a secretary, there are multiple people in the same job description. So just because you reduce the allocation in one cost center, you wouldn't want to necessarily delete the job description. Plus for historical information, as far as being able to look back and go, what were the duties of this individual? What was the salary that was associated with that? To have some consistency. So, yes, it is absolutely impossible for a position to be posted without it being activated in the system.
Okay, so it's closed, not inactive. But again, the reason we don't delete is, okay, so for example, we closed the director's position, but if we were to go back and look at a budget from two years ago where Denise was the incumbent in that position within position control, if I've deleted it, all of that history is gone. So we won't, I mean, which is really bad control because then I can't go back to a prior year and even see that because it's deleted. It's not, the position control database is an overall database, it's not an individual year-by-year database.
In a sense, it's almost a delete, but it's not the historical.
Correct, you cannot post anything against it, create anything against it because it doesn't technically exist at that time in the system.
And just the pure sense of timing of the superintendent, again, because I'm thinking of annual contracts, right, you can't, okay.
It would be pretty difficult if you were to.
Let me make a comment. If a new superintendent comes in and wants to make major changes in the first six months before he understands what he's doing, then you hide the wrong superintendent. Because nobody should come in here and immediately want to change positions without having an understanding of this district and how it functions. So if you see that happening, you know you're in trouble.
I agree, I'll ask superintendent.
Shirley?
I agree with what you're saying about the superintendent. That was going to be one of my points. Another one was to thank the staff for doing this. You know, I would say thank you for being overly descriptive in explaining not only what you're doing, but who's involved and where it's going to come out. And I really like your new organizational chart and the explanation of how you do it. Sometimes, you know, when you give more information, you get more questions. But I particularly liked that, I liked that you looked at the zero-based budgeting and you looked at, because I know there's a lot of open positions and there's a lot of people that have been doubling up, especially in facilities in that area. So I'm glad that you took the deeper look at that and you made some changes. I definitely don't think we should be waiting for this. The budget time is the time to do this. I support what you're doing here, I appreciate what you've done. And, you know, I'm glad we're getting something straightened out. We're not sitting here waiting, you know, for the next superintendent to come in. These are things that our district should be doing and, and you're the directors of those districts, those areas. You're the ones who should be telling us what to do. And like Caroline said, if, if some new superintendent comes in and has a new way of doing things in two months, you're going to go, wait a minute, I got a problem with you. You know, you're the guys that I'm going to listen to on what we should be doing with these districts. Let's get them in order, in shape, to make it an easier transition when we put a new superintendent on. Thank you, and thank you for giving me all this information. I mean, I went through it and I, I really liked it. I even added phone numbers to a lot of these. I like this, I'm going to keep this.
Yeah. Thank you. So, just doing it. Eric?
I want to waive their discussion for the interest of time. I want to waive and support, but I do want to agree with Ms. Tucker that if you had a superintendent who came in in the first month and wanted to do big administratively changes, that would be a red flag of, you've got trouble there. So I would agree with Ms. Tucker 100% on that issue. I think Ms. Brown also agreed with that.
Okay, I know, twice today, Caroline.
Right, twice today. So.
In the interest of time, I'm going to waive my support to move forward.
Bridgette?
Yeah, no, I agree. Just, when asking clarifying question does not mean that you're criticizing by any means. I wanted to ensure that I had a clarifying understanding. I do, I love org charts and I, I support it. I wanted to ensure I made sure what, as far as the controls were. So thank you very much.
Moving on.
Absolutely. So, did you want to speak with Krista through the budget process itself, or are you guys good with what we've presented?
I only have one question for you.
Okay.
I only have one question. When, when you did the budget up for the new year.
Correct.
Did, did the assumptions change? If so, how did they change?
Krista, do you want to address that? So you guys, if you, if you want, Ron, Denise and Jody, you guys are done. Thank you so much for jumping on, I appreciate you.
Good job, Ron.
Appreciate you guys a lot, thanks.
Good job, Denise.
My pleasure, anytime. Thank you. Bye now.
What'd you say Denise? I couldn't hear you.
She said bye now.
What? Can you speak louder?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Missy, did you hear Denise? I didn't hear.
I couldn't hear you, you're right.
Did you hear her?
I'm saying, thank you very much.
What?
Can everybody else hear me?
No, nobody else can hear you Denise. Can you speak it louder?
Thank you, guys.
See ya, bye.
Bye.
So, so Krista, did you want to speak to some of the assumptions that you used, what we're, what we included as far as revenues and? What we're, what we included as far as revenues and?
For, for next year. So, we're not talking about how we think this year's going to end and.
Right. I mean, the main thing as far as this year is, as you know, we, we anticipate we will not be receiving local revenues that we normally get for rentals, childcare fees, you know, those things when we're open. And we also think we'll have savings in terms of electricity. Our campuses are closed. Not so much in gasoline, because you store gas in the event of an emergency. So, we kind of load it up, unfortunately. So, I think for the current year, we're going to end a little better than we originally anticipated. I wouldn't say decidedly better, because we still are paying all of our staff. So, but go ahead for next year.
Yep, that's pretty much it in a nutshell for the, for this year, as far as, like you said, the local revenues. And for expenditures are a little bit less. And for just the biggest reduction we had for the way we think this year will project to end is in charters. The FTE came in for the survey three and it was less. So, there was a reduction there overall. But we haven't gotten the revenues yet for the fourth calculation for the FDFP. So, once we get those, we'll be able to plug those in. So, as far as for the assumptions, since the last time we met in regards to the 2021 budget, the only things that have really changed at this point in time are in regards to the revenues. We have an additional reduction in the state because of the Florida Family Empowerment Scholarship. As we talked about before, they made an increase to the percentage of allowable students. And so, in talking to cohorts in other districts, everybody perceives this is going to be bigger, a lot bigger than what we had originally thought. So, we have doubled that number as far as the number of students. And it was, there was approximately 179 students in this year. So, we have doubled that. So, you'll see a reduction in revenue there. So, that is what you see there. The other part that has changed as far as in the revenues would be in the transfer gone up a little bit to accommodate the changes that they were approved for the changes in the positions that you guys were just presented with, as that's how some of the positions are going to be used, is in a, in a capital maintenance kind of capacity. As far as the other, and the actual expenditures, the assumptions that have changed are based upon the staffing results. So, we have forwarded all of the positions from staffing to HR, particularly instructional. So, any positions that were waived by schools have now been added into this assumption. There was approximately 1.1 million that was added from the schools and their waivers and different add-on FTE funding that they used. So, what you'll also see that has increased. And this, this may actually, this is, this is probably going to change as students, individual IEPs are reviewed and if they, as they are transferring from middle school into high school and require support. But basically, there's an, an increase in the number of aides that are in the budget based upon the staffing process. So, based upon also the maintenance of effort with the IDEA, there is an increase in aides to the budget for that. But that is still fluid, because like I said, they are still reviewing cases with the students, see if we need to make some changes. It will be done, hopefully, it'll be done before, obviously, the classified staffing takes place, so that the changes can be used there. But mostly, you're just going to see additions to those positions. So, that is, those are the changes that have really taken place as far as in the expenditures. And so, those have been added to it. So, I really don't have any other additional assumptions at this point in time. I can tell you that, as Missy pointed out earlier, with the virtual enrollment, that we are having an increase in that. So, basically, basically what, like I said, we, we staffed this year before this happened conservatively with our class size. And there was a lot of analysis that was done. So, we were, we were proactive in trying to see what, what does this look like before it even happened, just to make sure that we were actually staffing as close to the legislative class sizes. So, we had a decrease in the number of teaching allocations due to that. So, then we have this pandemic happen. And when this happened, basically, you know, we're not really sure what it's going to look like. So, we've just kind of held fast. And like Missy said, you know, we're really watching all of the enrollment that is, changes that are happening. We're talking to schools, we're hearing what they're saying. And, and since staffing is our most expensive, it's our, it's our biggest expense, we need to be very diligent and careful in how we go about adding these units. To Bridgette's point, we want to make sure we, you know, aren't so fearful. We don't do things that we really will need. But we do want to make sure that we are being so good stewards and we're, and we're making sure we're, we're putting the resources where they're going to actually end up being needed. So, we're really working all together at the day-by-day process. But basically, we've tried to not overstaff anything at this point in time. We are just watching and we're going to deploy the resources as we see that they are coming in. And, and, and I know I'm not a part of the discussions as far as with the virtual and, and all of that. So, that's, you know, bigger than me and more qualified individuals curriculum are looking at that. So, I'm just waiting to see what they say. And then we're basically going to be allocating units. That's the way that everybody deems, and you all deem is, is the most effective for what we're going to be going into. So, with that being said, we're just being, you know, cautious and we're just holding fast. And so, with that being said, the way it looks right now is that we're still thankfully in a wonderful financial condition ratio of 7.88%. So, that's the way it's looking. The same assumptions were built in. There's a 0.5% increase for the staff, based upon what we said before. And then also legislatively with the teacher allocation categorical, that's also been built in. So, all of the information that we have to date has been built in. And I do want to share something with you all that I'm, I don't, I'm quite excited about. But just, you guys seem to really like the org charts and I, and we're really glad to hear that. That's been one of the changes that we've been working on long before this pandemic came about. So, basically, what we've been doing, the budget team since October, has been working with our financial software provider, ESE. And we've been coming up with improvements and creations to the position control system and the budget system. Basically, all of these things have been necessary in order to actually produce the zero-based budgeting that we're going to be doing this year. So, the budget team had been broken out into two separate teams to actually accomplish this task. And I can say, it's just been amazing that they've been able to continue working on these projects, even though we're working remotely. But we had a position control team made up of Deanna Lawton, Dina Hayes and Rob McEluso, who are working diligently to have all of the information be able to come out on time, real time, as far as positions and vacancies. And so, they'll be working on that. So, we should be able to see some real results as we roll into July of this year. And part of that change was that they had, they produced these org charts that you guys have seen. And then the other team was Sheena Runions and Regina Fossen. They've been working on the zero-based budgeting from the system and producing reports. And that would be able to go into a best practices budget book, the GFOA budget book. So, all of this had been in place before. And now, they're just continuing to work on it and we're really making some progress. So, I'm glad to say that the next budget, tentative budget that you all will receive will be in a different format. It's going to be in one that really closely resembles the CAFER that you guys get for best budgeting now. And it's going to be unlike anything you've seen in the last 20 years. But it'll be very clear and concise and transparent. It'll have historical data in it for you, so you can compare like the past three years. You're talking about position control. Information will all be, will be in this book. So, we're, we're super excited about it and very proud of this team that they were able to still continue to pull this off with everything going on. And we've also been working with HR to be able to automate some processes with position control and postings. And they've just been real receptive to it. So, there's, there's some changes internally that not everybody sees, but just for you guys to be proud of the fact that this team's really been working very hard to get these things done. So, it will also help us at these changing times to be able to forecast, you know, with the system better.
So, basically, to piggyback on what Krista has said. Krista, can you mute? Because I think it's feeding back. Thanks. So, just to piggyback a little bit on what Krista has said, the team has just done a yeoman's amount of work in trying to get this done, which is so exciting for me. So, you know, we've been in a budget of, it used to actually be old Lotus 123 spreadsheets that eventually got converted into Excel. And there was no correlation necessarily from what you would see in this book and what is actually sitting in our ERP system. We didn't include our revenue budgets and our system. It was, you know, now, right now, we have it so that every single dollar is contained in our budgeting system, in our financial system. And so, there isn't any more, hmm, where is that money? Or, you know, my poor accountant's going, can I have the most recent budget amendment to make sure everything's lining up exactly? So, all of this now will be produced from our, our resource ERP system, our financial software system. So, we're very excited about that. And I don't know if you remember, but during the MGT study, eons ago, one of their biggest criticisms was our budget document. And it was, you know, in order to follow a best practice, you may want to align yourself with the Government Finance Officers Association's Best Practices for Budgeting. They do, you know, excellence in budgeting awards, similar to what we've received for our financial statements forever. So, that has been Krista's goal, is to get our budgeting document in the same format as our financial services, or a financial statement document, so that they can submit for the award. But understanding that it's more important that it's in a readable format, that's, that's transparent and good for the community. And when compared for, so a rating agency, for example, they look at our CAFER and they know they can turn to whatever page it is and know that if they're looking at Palm Beach County, they're looking at Fairfax County, Virginia, or they're looking at Sarasota County, they're going to see the exact same information in the same format. So, it's great for them to be able to compare. That will then be the case also with our budget document. So, we're very excited. I'm very proud of Krista and her team for just kind of killing it, especially. I mean, I think actually her team likes it because they're at home. They actually get more work done, because phones aren't ringing off the hook and people aren't bothering them. But yeah, they're, they're doing a great job.
Just to follow, follow up. Great, great job, Deputy CFO, Krista. Good job. My, my, that's on the, that's on the supplemental org chart. My, I have this concern, which I've said before, you know, our deficit. And my concern is, is whether we should make any adjustments now for next year. Because I can imagine next year is going to be a horrible year. I'm really concerned about the budget for next year. When I mean next year, I mean 21, 22.
No, I, I.
That's my concern, given, I mean, we have a fund balance going from 69 million to 53 million this year, which is $16 million, you know, deficit spend. If we don't, I, I'm just afraid what's going to happen next year. You know, is there anything that we can do to make it so that we glide down instead of fall off a cliff? I'm really, I mean, I don't mean to bring it up every year, but.
No, I agree.
Next year seems, sales tax, I mean, I know that's, capital's a big thing and probably 10% of the money that we get from the state is sales tax related. But there was no restaurants open. There was no sales going on. That, that clearly has to affect the sales tax collections for the, for the one penny capital tax and for the money that you're going to get from the state, because that's how they get their money. And although it's, you know, single-digit percentages, it's still, I still am worried. I mean, I would like us to calculate those assumptions into our budgeting process this year and not keep the same assumptions. That's why I asked the question initially.
No, and I agree. I think part of, part of what's also not been included in the assumptions is any CARES Act funding. So, any of the funding we could potentially receive from the federal government as a cushion, which again, is one time.
Right.
But it does provide, hopefully, what would be a one-time cushion to allow the economy to then recover and get us back to where we want to be. But do, if it's the will of the board that we go back and make cuts, we can do that. I can, you know, obviously, if that's what the board wants to do, we can do that. It's totally within your purview. Please understand that we, we currently have what I believe is a good relationship with our union. But if we're sitting on a much larger fund balance than what we would have based upon not making any changes, my guess would be that if you have additional funding, there would be a request for an increase that we maybe could not sustain. So, that would be my only other issue.
And what was the downside?
Um, my comments, you know, I'd refer you to page four of the thing. And, you know, the state funds are down $1.4 million. That includes the 7.8% categorical that they gave us. So, if you add that to it, I mean, we're really down quite a bit in what the state gave us. You know, when you look at the numbers, you can see that it's over $10 million less this year than what they gave us last year. And the local funds, you know, are up almost $19 million. So, you know, we've got this, you know, money that will now be going to the empowerment funds. Those are basically coming directly from our local tax dollars. And anything else that the state is telling us we have to do is basically coming from our local tax dollars. Thankfully, there's a 90% cap on that. But if they come back and do a holdback, that 90% cap is gone. So, even more of our local dollars is going to be paying for our schools. And I would hope that it never goes to where, not only are we paying more than 90%, but I sure hope we'll never pay more than 100%, you know. But I'm really concerned that the legislature won't go back in session and, and address the issue. And, and the one thing that's out there is the, the salary increase. I mean, like that's $500 million. I mean, it was a big part of the budget and, you know, everybody, you know, was supportive of that. But they paid for it this year, but that's a reoccurring expense. Are they going to have the money? I mean, I don't know that they're going to have the money for it, you know, this coming year, let alone the following year, or that they'd fund it for us the following year. So, that really puts us in an awkward position. I mean, we have to go out there and I'm sure we're going to be hiring new people. What, what are we hiring them at? Are we hiring that at the 47.5? And what about the teachers that we have now that aren't making 47.5? Do we adjust that salary? Then only to find when the legislature goes back into session after the elections are over and it's safe for them to make the cuts, that they're going to come back and take that money away from us? And, and, I mean, how do you take back a starting salary? You give a new teacher. I know you're, you're, you're. I mean, I, I understand that you don't have, you're as frustrated as I am.
No, I am. And I would, I would, you know, again, it kind of depends on what ultimately happens with the budget. Again, you know, the governor doesn't have the budget on his desk yet. So, we're not sure where everything will land. If it remains in the budget, it would be my request that we actually separate out that component piece. So, if you're a teacher who makes 45 and you go to 47.5, I give you a separate supplement of 2,500 from this funding to get you to the 47.5. And a new teacher, we would keep the same, whatever we're at now, 44.3, and give them 3,200 as a differential. Because if in the next session, that categorical is removed and no money is added into the BSA, at least we could potentially negotiate with the union that this is, you know, it was funded for one year and now it's gone. So, I don't know if that would be anything they would even entertain. I haven't had a conversation with them yet, because I still don't know where we're going to land with what our revenue budget is. Like Krista said, she's put it in based upon the conference report. But we still have yet to find out what the final.
Well, Missy, that's what you get the big bucks for, is for thinking outside of the box and doing some of those things. And, you know, I know how we're doing the deficit spending. I mean, 16 million this year, of course, I know at the end of the year, we usually make up for that. But this year, we might not. And, you know, there were some concerns we had when we gave the 4 1/4% to the teachers just a few months ago. You know, because we took, you know, 11 million out of, you know, our, our trust fund, you know, in our.
Fund balance.
Fund balance. And now, eh, now we kind of wish we hadn't. And it's, you know, I don't know what to say. And I, and I just thank you for, for keeping all of those things in mind. And, and I know it's just frustrating for us as a board. And, and you take these, these numbers home with you, I'm sure. And we discuss them, you know, a couple of times a month. And you, you look at them daily. But it is so, so frustrating to know that, well, they're going to make us pay 25% more on the, the pension and they're going to make us pay this. I mean, tell us what you want us to do. They, they need to get back in session to address the declining revenue. They need to get back in session to decide what, what they're going to do on this. I mean, before, we have to hire these people.
Yeah, I.
I mean, they know we have to go, there's a certain time set. We have to put our budget in. So, they need to come to terms with their budget before we do ours. I mean, I just hope that we can get them to understand that.
Unfortunately, to even know what the impact of the pandemic has been on sales tax, it won't be until June, July, before they'll even know. So.
Well, they're getting hints of it.
So, you know, unfortunately, the governor's going to ultimately have to approve, I would hope, a budget with a lot of unknowns even for him. And then, that's why I was, if, if they would do a special session, I would imagine it would be later rather than before the beginning of the school year. Because they really, Amy Baker isn't going to necessarily know for her forecasting and her, her revenue conferences, what the impact has been to even begin to have the conversations on what it may look like, you know, within the next year or two.
None of my frustration is aimed at you.
Oh, no, I agree.
Just thanking you. I mean, I just really hope that you live through this. I mean, I just can't imagine being in your position right now. You're not making enough.
Dane.
Well, if we look at our benefits, $98 million.
Well, if we look at our benefits, $98 million. And that's the FRS increase. Why do we have to do it in one year? That's very punitive and very mean. That's already been passed. That legislature has, legislative issue has already been passed. I had somebody who said to me, no, you're wrong, but I'm sure that that was passed early in the session as most of those issues are. But, you know, the governor is not going to look at the budget until as late as he possibly can. And I understand that. What about the CARES Act? Where are we on hearing, do we have crystal ball, foo-foo dust, a magic fairy flying by?
Well, I'm hoping I'll have a little bit more information tomorrow. Every Wednesday I get on a phone call with DOE, with Finance Council. And they've told us soon. Before, you know, the first few calls, it was, we have no idea. So now it's soon. We'll hear soon. So hopefully tomorrow I'll have some more information on that because I am very anxious to see what we need to do. Ron, for the post-secondary, has received some funding for his college and for the students at the college.
Because we want that startup first, correct? I mean, that's our first issue is...
Yes. I think our adult student population, I think it's this plan for the police academy, the fire academy, there's another one. But he wanted nursing and I just, I needed a little bit more guarantee on making sure, because there's a lot more students as far as, you know, your ability to, to have less than 10 in a room. You know, some of them have eight students, so it's pretty easy and they can just make sure they're far enough apart. So I, you know, he wanted them to be able to start back up because the sheriff wanted them to start back. You know, other people are paying for their tuition to get these kids, these adults through their program. So, so that will be our first step, which will be a very nice way for us to also review and monitor how they're doing that, to see how that can help us when we move into starting our own schools back up again. So we are going to be monitoring that really closely. So I think there were like four programs that he's going to begin in June and July. So...
Well, that's good because I think that will give us a good sort of a barometer of how things go.
For adults only.
But you know, the money for classroom teachers is not new money. It's money that just was moved around. We took the best and brightest, which was about half of that. And we took money that we had in digital classrooms and we took a number of other things and just, and, and so we look at instructional materials, which, you know, is a big item this year. If we could push off standards, standardized, standards that were changing, if we could push off testing this next year, these are some things that might help us alleviate. And I know that we have asked, as, as school board association have asked for some of those things. I don't know if they're being, being heated or not. But is there some way that we could have a best case and a worst case budget? Is there some way that we could take a look at cutting if we have to? And what that might look like as compared to just going forward with this?
Of course, we can do that. We can have that discussion.
And not to the minute, not to the, the micro level, but at the macro, you know, at 30,000 feet up.
We have a lot of programs that, that we do in our school system that do not generate any revenue.
Well, there you go. And, and I mean, what do we do? You know, I'd rather...
They're valuable.
In a forward way than, and then all of a sudden, oh my gosh, we should have, could have, would have later on.
I know. One of the things that Mitzi has done is to move, take some of the capital funding and use it for operating, which where she's allowed to do that. And I've seen a lot of that movement in this budget. I don't know what percentage of it is now, but I know there's a...
Mostly it's been Denise's programmers and people who are performing maintenance on our software systems. So those are an allowable expense from capital outlay. And so we, you know, trying to save a few dollars. So it was like 300,000.
That's what I said though. That's what, you began trying to do that by moving some positions into capital funding where you could.
You'll see the, the overall transfers going down predominantly because we've finished in the rekeying project, which was another big transfer that we won't be having again for next year. So, but yeah, if you...
I agree with Jane.
Want us to do that.
I agree. We have no choice. It's like the weather.
Bridgette.
So it's interesting. I, I think, I agree wholeheartedly. I think, let me start all over. I, one, I'm really excited about the work you guys have done. I'm so excited about, I've heard from the somewhat seemingly like archaic, old school system and to see us move towards that for transparency, but also some monitoring and what have you. Because I know that was a lot of work on your end prior to that. So I'm excited for that. But I also, I think the conversation about what the future looks like is, I mean, we're all frustrated and have no idea. And that's, I mean, and that's in every sector, it's at every level of government. But I do agree that we contingency options and evaluating them and doing some, I mean, to Jane and Eric's point of having a budget that could illustrate something because it, and it's not to provoke fear in anyone, because we also recognize there's people at the end of those cuts and their livelihood. And this is a very, very, very difficult time. But the reality of what our revenues will look like, particularly, I am, as Eric had said, I'm very worried, and I know we've talked about this for 21, 22. But if, as we go through evaluating this, is there a way that we can present that, and I don't know what that looks like, but is there something or, or are those conversations, can you have kind of, not to add more work, but breakout, I mean, or have to do it though. So breakout sessions of here's a scenario, here's a scenario. Because I also don't think what last year looked like will, is what this year, upcoming year will look like. And I, I think, and that could be, and it could be a couple of different things. I mean, we have a ton of people from a virtual standpoint and that, you know, shifts enrollment. And then, you know, there's a lot of different things. Like I said, the private schools closing. And I'm glad to hear you guys are monitoring that. I think that, are we looking at registrate, like enrollment registration right now from this time last year to, right now as compared to last year? Just to get an idea of trends, I'm assuming.
I can tell you that our principals are basically our front line for that. So every year they monitor their registrations throughout the summer. And they are in constant contact with their executive directors and with us as well. If they see that there is, you know, a large spike that would basically increase in teacher, they let us know. So yeah, they are, they are, they always watch because they always want to be prepared. And I'm, you know, rather hire a teacher now than, you know, do it at five day if they, they see that they're going to have it. So yeah, they, they, they are all, they're our front line.
But I'd also just be curious and to see, because I don't know what, I mean, are we documenting that in some way, like every week? I don't know what the frequency is. Because I'm also curious, are, are we getting people registering? I mean, are families ready to send their kids back to school? You know, or are they waiting? I mean, there's so many other variables that families are just trying to put one foot in front of the other half the time. So they may not have registered their child. Does it necessarily mean they're not going to go to school? Or maybe they're waiting for what our plan is or waiting for more information. And so that puts us even, not even to mention the legislative and the financial impact, but then just the pure operational aspect of the risks of, like I said, I mean, there's a report that said 60% of private schools are like, have the high potential to close before fall. And therefore, where do those students go? So being prepared from a staffing standpoint, how do we respond to that? But also, are we evaluating it from, because the salaries component is going to be huge. And then also not even, we're not even talking about the social distancing standpoint. I mean, I know we've talked through that. So, I mean, can you, are we looking at it in that way, like as a year-over-year, weekly, to kind of get some guidance of what, just to kind of get a better sense of the crystal ball, have a clarity of it?
Yeah, I can, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, basically, the way the principals, they do compare year to year. They also have their enrollment projection that we meet with them, but of course, we don't meet with them until, you know, it's like November, December of the prior year, which of course, this wasn't happening. But they are fully aware of the fact that with their enrollment, which they compare at point in time, you know, from the year before, where they should be at this point in time, because they know if they don't achieve a certain level, then they will be, they could be losing a unit. So they try to also do their master scheduling and things to be in, you know, in compliance with that. But I'll let Mitzi take over, but I, that's...
But no, and that, and that's true. The, the individual principals, this is like a key indicator for them. They, they watch this and monitor this like a hawk. And they're in constant contact with their executive director. If anything about their current projection for enrollment seems way off. If it's, all of a sudden, there was some new housing development that they didn't know was coming into their area that's bringing them, you know, a whole bunch more children. Or, I don't know, there was some kindergarten program that closed and now they're all coming over, whatever it is. So they're acutely aware of that. They're paying, they pay really close attention to that. And they talk to their executive directors and to budget. Because again, if their enrollment is higher than they believe it's going to be, then they are letting the budget team know that I'm going to have more people. I need to hire more people. I need more teaching units. And then at the same time, if they're seeing that they're not kind of rising to the level that they believe they're at, then they hold units back. Because they know that at five-day count, we're going to take them away from them anyway, because they're not going to have enough and that we can't afford to overstaff our schools. So, so they, they're really mindful of that. I mean, they actually do a really good job of that, I think. So they do that on a, a daily or a weekly basis. They check in with their registrars. I don't know. I think the registration process hasn't really been going on for very long, has it?
Just, I mean, maybe two weeks. I could be wrong, but it's relatively recently. And I'm just curious, I'm just curious as, as we look ahead and there, there are different indicators that will help us to have some sense.
Well, and I think some of the teachers have a conversation with the child or their parents, you know, the child's parents, are you planning on coming back next year? You know, I think there's lots of...
But is that bubbling up to us where we can start making the financial, I mean, assist or do you...
Well, that's how we, that's how we staff our schools is based upon what we believe the enrollments will be. I mean, I think Krista's done an amazing job with, with enrollments and estimates. And, and she turns in what she believes RFT is going to be to the state. And it's come in like spot on. It, it's really close. I mean, she, she's got that enrollment system down to a science, I think. She's, and she's worked with DOE and, because of course, they'll push back on a lot of things. This doesn't fit within this model or this model or this model. And she'll explain why. So, so she does a really good job with that. So I, I'm very confident that whatever our enrollment's going to be, we're going to, we'll be ahead of it.
Okay.
To be able to respond to it. I think we're well aware, we may see a higher enrollment in virtual school, which will, you know, require us to then provide the, the school support that you have in a school to that. Because currently, they don't have a registrar. They don't have a guidance counselor to help guide those kids along that are in there. So those kinds of things, which, you know, impact your budget.
No, of course. Well, even again, the virtual, I mean, there's a capacity of the facility standpoint. And then there's also the, I mean, if, if we have certain people not returning and we've talked through that. So I, and I, Krista, I have all the faith in the world. I appreciate, appreciate everything you're doing. I think this is, it's going to be put to the test for all of us trying to figure it out, but being, you know, one step ahead in trying to think through the various contingency situations. And the more we can publicly talk about this, I think it helps the public understand all of the things that we have to weigh as we move closer to opening, opening day, if you will. So, thanks.
Okay.
Anything else moving on? So, so I would, my takeaway is, is that we're going to go back. We're going to look at a worst case and a best case scenario. And the best case scenario is obviously going to involve making some cuts that we don't have built into the budget currently. So we can bring those back to you for some discussion.
Do you feel that you can do that at this point?
I will have a conversation. We have a cabinet meeting at 11 o'clock tomorrow.
Because I don't, I don't, there are so many unknowns out there right now. I don't see you have any ability, other than using a crystal ball, to actually be able to do this right now.
Yeah. I mean, there's, the only thing would be those types of costs that don't, you know, provide an offsetting revenue. Those are the only things that, but those are very valuable programs in the eyes of our community. Pre-K programs, we don't generate any revenue from. Summer learning academies, we don't generate any, any revenue from those. So again, they're, they're valuable, very valuable programs. Don't know if that's where we want to go. And obviously, it's not where we want to go first. So we have to start looking at whatever else we can find in our departments and...
I think what I'm asking you, Mitzi...
Operational efficiencies and...
I think what I'm asking you, Mitzi, is, do you feel that this is a viable request we're making of you?
Well, I mean, I'll do anything. So...
I know you will. But is this a viable request we're asking?
Well, let, let me take it back to cabinet and have them take a look and see. Yeah, we'll just have the conversation, see what we can come up with in terms of what we think we can do. I mean, it may not be that I'm going to go from 16 million to five or something, but, you know, it could be something. Well, we can, we can always go back and sharpen the pencil, as they say, right? So...
Okay.
We'll see what we can find. I'll talk with...
I don't want you to have an exercise in fertility, you know?
No, I know. But I guess ultimately, you don't want it to all be in one draconian sweeping, yeah, one hatchet job either. So I certainly don't want, because that ultimately, if that's the way it works, would be like my last budget. So I really don't want it to be that way. So...
No.
So, okay.
Thank you very much.
Charlie.
I share Caroline's concern too, that, you know, sometimes, you know, they say, oh, everybody go in there and cut your department 10%. Yeah, you know, and then you get people all upset. And, you know, just like parents and students are upset with all of this, so is our staff. And, you know, and I don't want to make them do something that, you know, that they might not have to go forward with. I mean, because I think that our directors and our people are looking at that right now. And, you know, to, to then put the pencil to paper and say, well, yeah, I think I can do without this person in my school. You know, that, that person, you know, may be named by the position or something like that. And, and I just, you know, would hate to be adding those types of strain onto, you know, our directors and our employees.
I've had some...
Especially when we don't know.
Yeah, I've had some conversations with my colleagues. And again, it's things like, you know, no out-of-state or out-of-county travel. Like just, you can't have that or whatever it is. What would that save you if you go into a hard hiring freeze? So once you set your staffing, boom, you're done. No more staffing. No more posting of positions, you know, unless you have a million vacancies, like we always do with bus drivers or food service, you know, those we always post. But, you know, it becomes a hard hiring freeze. There's a lot of money to be saved that way and that's how...
Well, yeah, it's, it's a lot of money to be saved when I have a hard hiring freeze, when you can hire a substitute to do it. Well, there you go again, because I think regardless of what happens, we're going to have trouble getting substitutes next year just for the people who have to stay home because they're sick, if in fact, we come back to school. So, you know, you can say you want a hard hiring freeze all you want, but you still have to put somebody in front of that class. Unless you're going to be taking people out of the district office. I mean, that might be an option too. But, you know, I mean, if we're going to have our executive directors teaching class, you know, if we have a hard hiring freeze, because we can't, we're going to have trouble getting substitutes. We're going to have trouble getting substitutes in the classroom. We're going to have substitutes, you know, janitors and bus drivers if we start up school again. But all of this is so conjectural. I mean, we don't know what's happening.
I agree.
And to give you more things to worry about, you got a, you've got a plate full already.
Hold on, we got to move. Jane?
Well, I just was looking over this realigned plan revised. And, and some of the good material that I think we've got to put more emphasis on is in our choice office, where kids are coming from and where they're going. And we have gone from homeschooling of about 653 students, if that's accurate, in '98, to 1,600. And we've gone, we've gone from, and this is not, you know, charter, which we know the percentage of that. And the Family Empowerment Scholarship has taken, you know, quite a toll on us. So I think we've got to look at all these different options. Where does a child coming from to us and how that's going to impact learning and, and our choices that we make in terms of academics?
You may actually see that number increase. I'm not positive as far as homeschooling. I know that when my daughter did this eons ago, because she was a competitive tennis player.
Right.
She was enrolled in Florida Virtual full-time. So I had to literally enroll her as a homeschooled student.
And you don't do that now, so that may have...
You don't have to do that. Yeah.
But I'm saying between homeschool, real homeschool and virtual and family empowerment, all these different options, not just that we're losing students to them perhaps this year, but those that are coming back to us. Because I'm here to tell you, we don't know if all of the private schools have been providing distance learning.
Well, or they're going to close.
We have no validity to check that because we don't have any right to know anything they're doing. they're doing. So we may have some students coming to us from these other entities, and we really need to know that, because that could impact everything that we do from an academic standpoint. So I think we've got to really monitor these things more closely, because it's going to be more and more important, not only to that principle-
15 minutes.
-to know what the numbers are, which we compute in December. So last December's may kind of be a mute point right now.
Agreed.
Okay, Bridgette, and this is the last one, because we need to move on.
Yep. No, no, I was just going to add, because I do agree. I think there's so many unknowns. It's not that come back to us with, we want X percent. I think it's, I think all of us want to make sure we're giving you guys the support to make these decisions, and I don't need extra PowerPoint presentations or anything like that. And something of the sense of, even if it's cabinet or a task force, but that's evaluating these as they come along and giving us an update. Because I also think it's really helpful for the public, because people are worried, but then the more you have conversations, I mean, even as a mom who's working, it's very, it's hard to figure out what those next steps are. And no one has the answer, and that's not anyone's fault. But it's hard for employers to figure out what they need to expect of their employees, based on what the school's going to do. And we have to navigate a number of different things. And so not so much, I mean, and the budget's going to fall into that too. We don't know. It could rise here, it could decline here. And so I agree to the point of, don't go through this exercise blindly, because, and I don't know that that's going to value anything. I think it's more or less, can we have kind of an update from your team verbally? Doesn't need to be a presentation of just some, because I know you guys are talking about it, and I think that may help kind of move forward. Does that, okay?
Okay, moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. Appreciate it.
No, referendum. I know, I missed that one. Referendum.
Oh, you're doing good. Plenty of time.
You know, I thought it was a quarter of three. It's not.
Oh, yeah. No, you're good on time.
Impact, no, referendum. That's the next item on the agenda.
I don't have anything for the referendum. I thought you guys were going to have a discussion.
Jane?
I was. I didn't have anything prepared, I'm sorry.
Okay. Shirley?
I don't think it's a good idea to just, you know, to make any changes to what we've got. There was a very good article editorial in the paper yesterday, Sarasota Herald Tribune. Dan D'Elia, I know it's online. But, you know, this is a very uncertain time, and there's a lot of people that are out of work for one reason or another. And to be moving this at this time, you know, on the one hand, we might get a lot of parents that are supportive of us, the schools, because they know what they've had to do. But then there might be employees, employers, that are upset because we don't have the kids. But we don't know how people are going to be voting. There are just too many uncertainties. But more importantly, we're going to have a new superintendent, and the new superintendent is the one who usually is the one out there leading the charge. I don't want to put that on the shoulders of our new superintendent. We've just got too many new things going on, and, you know, I think Eric, you brought it up at the last meeting, you know, we don't need to be adding things to our plate right now. You know, we need to be focused on getting a new superintendent, and getting the budget straightened out, and making sure that our kids are safe, and that we have an educational program, you know, forward. I don't think that we need to be adding this to it now, especially since it doesn't expire until 2022.
I think we run the risk of not having it pass because of that, that it doesn't expire until 2022. I'm fine with leaving it where it is. I won't be on the board, but I will be working for the agenda, for the referendum.
As you always do.
Yes, I do.
I've got my yes pin on.
I'll have mine the next time. Jane?
Well, you know, I just want to say, of course, everybody knows where I stand on this. I believe that we should wait until 2022. And of course, I would have said that had we not had the pandemic. I'm really sorry that we did have a pandemic. But considering the pandemic, it puts it, to me, out of reach for us. To say that we don't have to spend any money on a campaign is preposterous. Anyone knows that's running for office this August or in November knows that you have to raise money. And in a general election, you have to raise double the amount of money that you would have to raise in a special election, because you have so many more people to touch that would vote. There's usually an undervote of about 25%, according to what I've been able to find out from the supervisor's office, in those last things that make the ballot. But I think it would show a real insensitivity to the issue itself and to our community. We're going to have a new superintendent, and I'm really excited about that. We're going to be doing some excellent work in the next month, and so, in finding the right person for us. And perhaps it's one time that we'll all agree on it. And maybe then, I mean, I may be just, you know, making this up, but then maybe, Eric, in March or whatever of '22, we could all get together and all together, put a campaign on where there wouldn't be-
What do you want to say?
See, this is the problem. It's either my way or the highway. We have been around doing this for a long time, and you come on, and it's like, okay, you're going to play my way, my rules, my people, or else you're not. That we've got to stop. We've got to look at it, and the good of the community, and the good of the school district, and all come together and try to make it work for all of us at that time. I would not support putting it on the November ballot, and look forward to passing it at the regular time that we normally have, which would be around March of 2022. I do hope that the teachers' union, and Mr. Robinson and Mrs. Ziegler will be with us. We'll all be on one big team, all rooting together behind a new superintendent. This is an excellent time for him to build, or her to build goodwill in our community, with our staff, with our teachers. We have a lot of repair work to do, and I'm aware of that. And I'm hoping that all together, we will move forward. We cannot do without this money. It has been a Godsend to us. The longer day, the arts programs, the support of staff and extra personnel that we've been able to hire, has made such a difference in the lives of our students. And I know it has. I've got a soon-to-graduate grandson from Riverview High School, who's received an exceptional, 13 years in the school district. And I'm so, so proud of him, and so proud of all the others that are graduating. But I really think this is the right thing for us at this time.
Okay. I have student. Bridgette?
Well, it'd be no surprise as to where I stand, as I've been bringing this up since 2014. So really, it was when I got on the board, so I know you said to Eric, but more, I just fundamentally believe that this is the right thing to do. I, you know, there are oftentimes the cost to run the election, and I think it's important for the public, that is a different topic. But I'll start with, we just had a budget discussion, and we are likely projecting '21, '22 to be a very difficult year. I don't want to put this referendum at risk. As a personal, as a mom, I have a direct benefit immediately, more than anything, I mean, more than anything else. I have a pipeline of girls that are going to be going to our schools. It should not be misunderstood, and I see the value of it. I'm very passionate about it, but I believe in doing it the right way. And if I can do it for $0 versus 200, 300, 300,000 to 500,000, give or take, average is about $350,000, especially when we approach a financial, the economy that we will be looking at, and the lag that it will take for, really, I believe, to hit our budget will be '21, '22. And we were talking about small, different incremental cuts. This is being, having the foresight to, you know, remove that additional expenditure. I believe our community, even in the hard economic times, because the referendum passed during the downturn, the Great Recession before too, I believe this community supports our schools, even in hard economic times, because it is, the pipeline to a stronger economy is supporting our education and supporting our students. I think that it'll illustrate a number of, not only do you have a substantial amount of voter input, which is the whole purpose of putting something on the ballot, and then you have the savings, but I also believe that doing it the right way sends a message to the community in a very unifying front. You know, the part that, having this conversation in 20, for the 2016 general election, then come the 2018, and I've reviewed it, and I'm trying to keep calm, because I'm very passionate about this. And I know all of you are about the actual, you know, continuation of it. I think all of us are. The placement of when we ask for it is something I believe, and have believed from the beginning, that it should be when you have maximum amount of voter input, and when you can, especially, and also if you can save money out of our general fund. I believe this community supports our schools. I believe that even despite, I know we have a new superintendent coming in, but again, I believe in this community. I believe that they will be there to continue to support us, and I think illustrating that we are able to come together, because in 2016 and in 2018, there's always a, well, maybe we can do it then, or maybe we can do it then, or maybe, we'll look at it next time. I mean, I went back and watched the tapes. It's the same exact thing. And my stats and data and facts haven't changed. And when we talk about the cost, I mean, it was referenced here, and I know it was referenced in op-ed, and I'm not, the cost to run in a campaign is not the discussion we should be having. I think, do we want to see, do you want the voters to weigh in on the continuation of this, the referendum? Yes, I think the board understands that. And then it's, do we do it at the optimal time where we can save the most money? The best ROI is going to be if we are able to send $0 and it continue. And there's virtually zero risk by starting in November. Zero risk. And the final thing is, and this is, you know, I know this has happened at other counties, and I know everything was, but last fall, the discussion came up at the county commission, that they may not even approve it if it was done on a general election. I'm sorry, a special election. So we could be waiting until March of 2022, and I don't know what the makeup will be there, but that is also, it was a majority of their board, I think it was like four to one. So I don't, that puts it at risk as well. And so, again, I believe taking this step forward, even though there's a lot of uncertainty, I am confident this community will continue to support our schools. I think we'll illustrate a unifying approach. I know that we talk about it every other year, and we always say, well, maybe next time, maybe next time. Well, I think right now is the time. So that's where I stand.
Eric?
So I just wanted to dispel certain myths that people have said at the board table today, and people have said in the past, as far as going out in advance. Well, the surtax, which is going to be on 2022, expires in 2024. It's going to be voted out two years in advance. So going out for things in advance isn't without its exceptions. The environmentally sensitive land purchase that we did, that was done multiple years in advance, in November. The surtax one, in November. Legacy Trail, in November. So our district, our community, has a history of voting for things in November. So we know that. We have empirical evidence of actual votes being done for taxes in November. So we actually know how the community is going to vote on that time period. We actually know how people vote during November. We know, and I've said this many, many times, but I'll say it again, more people voted in the Water and Soil Conservation District on the November ballot than voted in the referendum. And a lot of people didn't even know that they were voting for Water and Soil Conservation District. That's how down-ballot the Water Soil Conservation District is. So to talk about drop-offs, there's no bigger drop-off than the Water and Soil Conservation District. But people voted. You have to trust in the citizens. This is the public school system, and I hear people saying, I support public schools. It's a conjunction. It's the public and the schools. You can't say, I don't think that the public's going to be knowledgeable. I don't think that the public will vote. I don't, you can't say that and still say, I support the public school system. You can't demean the public and say, and you support the public school system. Because those things go hand in hand. You have to support that there are the owners and buyers, they're our bosses, the public is, of the public school system. My fear is, is tax fatigue. In 2022, when this is projected to come on, this is my big, one of my big driving forces. I agree, spending $400,000 unnecessarily is a big deal, but losing the tax surtax. We're going to go in the same year and ask people, we want you to vote for the referendum, although it's going to be first, but then we're going to ask people to vote for the surtax. We run the risk of people, of us losing out on the surtax, of asking people for the same tax twice in the same year, going out to the well multiple times. There is no downside. Regardless of what happens, if you put it in November ballot, we still collect the same amount of taxes. Regardless of what happens in November, it doesn't affect the budget of our district. But if we lose that surtax vote, or we lose the referendum vote, that is catastrophic to our district. But I mean, I'm swimming upstream. I know it's going to be 3-2. But I just want to say a few more things before I just acquiesce the position. One, I think when you talk about how much Ms. Goodwin brought up, how much it costs to run an election, the general election, I know I'm the new person on the board, but the one thing that Eric Robinson is an expert on, if you don't believe me, just go to Facebook, or go to the web, or go to the internet, I know how much it costs to run an election in Sarasota County. There is nobody in Sarasota, there's nobody in the world who has done more treasure work in Sarasota County than Eric Robinson. So I defy that somebody knows more about how much it costs to run an election in Sarasota County. And I'm telling you, based upon my experience in all the elections that I've done, there's no way you can't do a general election referendum for half the cost, if not a third of the cost that it costs for the special election. And I've done special elections all throughout the state. I've done general elections, referendum, from dog catcher up to governor's races and everything in between. So I think I have some sort of knowledge on that issue. But let's put all those facts aside. Ms. Goodwin said something that's really germane to the entire discussion, when she said, my way or the highway. That is the crux of this discussion. The crux of the discussion is the board dynamics. This is something that goes to the core about how this board operates. I think that at least, for at least the recent future, Bridgette and myself have tried our best to be compromising, to be accommodating. And in fact, I mean, just a clear example is how I made the motion, and Bridgette seconded for the FSBA to be the consultant. We have tried to be as accommodating as possible. And here's a chance for you guys to show that you guys are willing to work with us as much as we're willing to work with you. So if we could put aside the my way or the highway philosophy, and try to work together on something, and come to a compromise, I think that will be great for our board. That doesn't mean I'm not still going to try to heal, try to compromise. I'm still going to try to acquiesce and try to get along. But it goes a long way if one of, at least of the three of you could meet us halfway on one issue. That would go a long way.
Sometimes I do think it's your way or the highway, and that's what I implied. It was not that I, it was my way or the highway.
I got that.
You got that, right?
I got that.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because it's a little confusing. Mrs. Ziegler, you said that you thought it was the right thing to do, and you also said that it was irresponsible to not do it in the general election. You said that in the newspaper. I don't really think that you're qualified. I don't think you've worked on this enough, or have experienced with this kind of a referendum enough to make that assertion. As far as the county commission approval is concerned, the last time that a county commission attempted to stop a referendum resulted in a suit, and that was last year. And it is not something that went very well. And in talking with county commissioners in the last six months or so, they're really not interested in taking this fight. They are interested in passing the issue on to Ron Turner and to the supervisor of elections. So I will just mention those things. But yes, I would like it to be that we could work together. I think that would be a great thing. But in the 20 years that I have worked on the referendum, the one group- But in the 20 years that I have worked on the referendum, the one group that has been abusive toward me has been a familiar group to my friend sitting to my left. And it, it has certainly affected me in, in great ways, and, and not most of them positive. But I will just say that this is probably going to be the last couple of years that I serve on the board. I'll be leaving the board at the end of '22. I won't be running for reelection. I'll be helping with the referendum in any way that I can, hope that everyone else will join. But I believe this is the right thing to do for this time. It doesn't mean that later down the road, you can't change it. But I believe that it's the right way to do it next time and that as, as grateful as we are to our community and as wonderful as our community has been to us, I hope that we will repair our relationship with the community thanks to a new superintendent and that this will be moved forward for another four years. It is a very important issue. And it's amazing to me how many districts, how many counties within the state have had to go to the one mill operating, as well as many of them to a penny in capital sales tax in order to accommodate things because funding has continued to drop, millage rates have continued to drop. And it's, it's hopefully not going to be on the backs of public schools this year that the budget is cut, but I wouldn't believe that it wasn't. And, and it's always the same spirit that was the spirit in 2002 that caused me to have lots and lots of debates in 2006, in 2010, in 2014, and in 2018. It's been problematic. At one time, it was noted that, you know, the referendum, we shouldn't, we shouldn't even have this money. We shouldn't be raising this operating, these operating dollars. They were unnecessary. We had Herb Levine, remember Herb Levine?
Yeah, Venice Tax Player League.
Venice Tax Player League. We had Walt Augustinowitz, Rod Thompson, who's still around, and Richard Swire. And they sort of haunted me everywhere I went and, and so forth. But it was always then, at that time, it was okay to say I'm against it. And then in 2014, it was Kelly Caldwell and Koba, and the Argus Foundation talking about the referendum and making sure that, you know, they were, were going around, and I was kind of following them from, from point A to point B. But it became, became a mantra of, let's not talk about not doing the referendum. Let's talk about what it cost. Because the cost of it became the most paramount part of it. And if we took the cost of 350 out of the first year of $60 million, if we, we've never said that, but I guess we could, we could say, well, we just take it out of the money that we get, because I mean, it, it does come out of something. But I wish it weren't that way, but I think it's an excellent way to talk to your community about a certain issue and have all the attention in the world. And that's the benefit, really. That's the good part of a special election, is that you get to talk to the people in the community and enlighten. And with the voter rolls, the way they turn over every year, and people moving in and leaving, this is a transient area to, to a degree. So that the group you speak to in four years is a very different group than you spoke to before. So I'll just leave it. I know it's getting long and, and whatnot, but I will just leave it at that point to say that I will not support moving it to November.
Shirley.
Eric, you said that you know more about running campaigns than anybody else.
How much it costs?
How much it costs? Because you, you've taken money in, in this PAC and that PAC. But Eric, I'm talking, please. Eric, I am talking, please. Give me the mic. And, but at other times, you, you talk that, well, I'm just a treasurer. I don't make any decisions. I just write the checks. So we've got people here that did run campaigns on the referendum. And we heard from the one who chaired the campaigns, the last, the 2014 and 2018 in the paper, both saying, now's not the time. And both, you know, you, Bridgette and Eric, you've talked about you wanting more voters because we'll get more voters in November, but I would rather have more informed voters. You yourself said that there were a lot of people who voted for the Water and Sewer District that didn't know what they voted for, didn't know they voted for it. Well, that's what happens. You get down to the bottom of the ticket and they start voting for things they don't necessarily. But what we need to look at is not come to the table with ideas that are set, not my way or the highway, but because I was agreeing with you to move the election to November because I thought we would win in November, no problems. But things have changed. There was the dissension on the board with the union and the superintendent. But more importantly, we're getting a new superintendent. And when you go out with a campaign, you've got to have a message. And the message is, how am I going to spend that money? We don't know. It's not up to us. It's going to be part of what this new superintendent comes and brings to the board, that he's going to, or she, will be able to work with us, work with where we're at. And of course, we don't even know where we're going to be at with, you know, all the other things happening in Tallahassee. But it isn't our plan. It's the superintendent that is going to be going out there, and we're going to be asking, have you ever run a referendum? Have you ever done this? It is the superintendent that is supposed to come up and go to the voters with a plan. We don't have a plan to go to the voters and tell them what we're going to spend this money on. So if, if you can't come to the table and understand that there are changes, and sometimes when there are changes, you've got to, you've got to change with them. That, yeah, well, maybe this isn't the best time to make that change because we're getting a new superintendent. And how is that superintendent supposed to go out there while he's already got, or she has their hands full, trying to decide what we're going to do for our students? How am I going to balance this budget when we get the cuts from Tallahassee? How am I going to get acquainted with everybody else and then come up with a plan on how to use the money two years down the road? It's too much to ask of a new superintendent. And I think rather than coming to the table with set ideas on how you want to do things, that you too ought to reach out and understand. Things have changed. Understand that things have changed. And, and realize that, well, yeah, maybe that might make sense. You know, that's all I'm asking. Just, just personal feelings aside, and think, what is that campaign going to look like with a new superintendent? We don't know. We don't know. So now is not the time to do it.
The last time that we lost the referendum was in 2000. And we were in the same predicament as we are now. The community was upset with us. There was a lot of dissension on the board. I lost my election. I mean, it was, they were mad. And we lost the referendum. So I'm, personal history to tell you that this is not a good time to go out and go for this referendum. It's not. Why did the county pull the health tax off the, off the agenda for November? They pulled it off because they didn't think it would pass. And everybody talks about the ability to, to vote. Everyone has an ability to vote, whether you, and you'd have more of an opportunity to vote against it in, in March than you would in November. Because it is the lone item out there. So if there was this much animosity towards the referendum, they would vote it down in March, just as well as they'd vote it down in November. So I, I'm not, I'm not in favor of changing it. I don't care. I think Bridgette, I think you're next, Bridgette.
Thank you.
One of you are.
I, it's interesting, coming here, armed with facts, understanding the passion, but there is, there are statements made, like to hear a fellow board member make condescending remarks directed at me, telling me I'm not qualified. How do you think that ever, does, how does that illustrate that we're able to work together? I do think it's irresponsible. I think that there are so much person, like I focus on the facts. It's irresponsible as fiduciaries to say, if I can do it for zero, or attempt to do it for zero, without risking it being renewed, or spend additional dollars, especially hinging off of a budgetary discussion as we forecast an economic downturn, that is irresponsible. I come with facts. You want to talk about the frequent amount of voter participation? That's where I come from. But I just heard a couple of board members, particularly one, sit there, not only personally attack me, which is a horrible demonstration and a perfect example of what truly puts the renewal, whether it's in November or in March of 2022, at risk. And I am passionate about it because I have kids that will be going through and will have a direct benefit from that. So I resent those statements. And I think it is a completely, I think it's irresponsible, and I think it's disrespectful to every single person in this community and in this district that works their tail off and they see this behavior. I will stop at this point. I think it's, but it's just, I think it's indicative of this hypocrisy that I'm here to disrupt things, or Eric and I are the problem. I would never say something like that. So I hope you're proud of yourself. It's a great example for our students.
Eric.
My comments are some in the same vein, to say someone's inexperienced or unqualified is, we're all qualified to sit up here. But then, I mean, it's one thing to talk about facts and talk about the issues, and that's fine. But when you guys start going into personal attacks, when people start saying my way or the highway, I can give you countless examples, this year alone, how me and Bridgette have tried to compromise and tried to make, you can't, I would love for you to show things that you've tried to do and compromise. My way or the highway, I think it's in the reverse of, of that, sitting there attacking people personally. Sit there and bring up, I never said I manage campaigns. I said I do accounting. So to bring up PACs, I never said the word PAC. So to bring up those type of issues are not helpful for the discussion, not even germane to the discussion. I never said people didn't know what they were voting for. What I said was, you, a lot of people don't know about the Water and Soil Conservation. But to say that people don't know, I was, I was actually making the example that the public does know. On my, my whole germane, I went through a long diatribe, I thought, talking about how the public does know, how you can trust the public. I, I understand it's going to be 3-2, that it's not going to move forward. I get that. But the personal attacks on people, you say, put personal feelings aside, but then you get personal with people and you personally attack people. That is unnecessary. If you think that it's better in March, then say that's better in March. You, you should be able to make your case without going personal attacking people. You should be able to make your case without demeaning people. If you have a side, you, you guys are going to win. Don't be sore winners. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to stay in March. There is no reason to go after these personal attacks against people. I just don't think that it, that it's helpful, and it goes counterproductive to the very subject of what you're talking about. We're not going to have it in March, but there is no reason for the personal attacks. Can we, can we just stop that and just talk about the facts and the issues?
That's the end of the agenda that I have. And no, no one's, our next is, the only other thing we have is member comments. I think we've made comments.
Shirley.
I have a couple of member comments.
I have a few member comments, and one of them is directed to Mitzi and probably Laura, Kingsley also, the Summer 2020 Boost Program, the personal academic instruction that you sent us, on how you're going to look at those students that have fallen behind or may have fallen behind, and how we're going to be offering them something in, in July to help them come up. I, I think that's a wonderful thing that you, you shared with us and that we're doing for them. I'm going to, I'll let you talk when I make my two other points in there, because you're going to have to answer this one, too. And the other one is the, we did the, on the workshop, the Sky Academy. But another thing that had been on that agenda on the 24th was the financial advisory report. Maybe we'll get an update on that later. And the final thing I'd like to say is that, you know, Jane's got a senior graduating, I've got a senior graduating. And I know how frustrating it is for, especially those seniors, but the eighth graders and all of the kids who are missing those last few weeks of school. And I know there's probably some that missed those tests too, right? But you know, they, you know, they missed the grad bash, you know, in, in Orlando. They, they've missed the prom, and they missed their in-person graduation. And I know we are planning to have a delayed one in July. And, and we've looked at having some sort of prom that's not going to cost so much money, but have it at the schools. I appreciate that you're, you know, giving consideration to those families that may be impacted, may not be able to attend that. But, you know, I feel you're paying students, you know, that are, you know, missing out on this, because we as grandparents are too. We've waited for that. But, and then, that's all.
So for summer boost, the, the plan is actually to begin right after school ends. So it will be the entire month of June, five days a week, working with those students who on the iReady 2 testing would have trended to scoring lower on an FSA had they taken it. So those students have already been identified at the elementary level, grades two through five, and their teachers, their principals, they've all received a copy of this plan. And they will have already begun reaching out to those students to get them signed up. Then the middle school and high school are those students who are going to have an incomplete as of the end of this quarter. So it's to bring them back to the point where they can complete their quarter and get a final grade for the year and be able to move on. So that's what's happening for elementary, middle, and high in the month of June. So it'll be a, a big effort. It's more personalized to those individual students. There's one-on-one time with just you and the teacher. It's, it's kind of a tutoring component, more than anything, we're hoping. Our summer ESY will still be going forward, as it always says, it's state mandated. So those students, the higher ESE need students will be getting their ESY education virtually, which will be different than they've ever received it before. But again, you know, that'll follow the normal process that we have with our union for summertime. This will be more along the lines of a summer learning academy model as far as the teachers. So we're trying to get the right teacher with the right student at their schools, and hopefully we can bring them up so that they can start the fall semester ready to go. As far as graduations, yeah, we are, you know, deeply disappointed that we're not, because this would be the week. This, you know, my calendar's like still got all those graduation ceremonies on them, which is, which is sad. And I know that, I think it's the 28th, Alta Vista's doing a little fifth grade celebration.
Yep.
And then I think it's Pine View's Parents Association, the Pine View Association, they're planning something, I think, for their kids this Saturday or next Saturday. Some of them, I think Dr. Shelley had something planned for her graduating seniors. A lot of them are, you know, drive-throughs, Decorate your Cars and stuff like that. It's not, not what they'd originally had planned. And we're still fingers across that they can walk across the stage. They're planning for it. We've received the contract from Cool today to do Northport High School and Venice High School at the stadium. So that contract's being signed now, and they should be proceeding with that if we can have that done in July. And I know the other three high schools are also doing it, or four high schools. So our fingers are crossed that we'll be able to, to be able to do this in person and have these kids walk across some kind of a stage somewhere. So, was there another one? You had three, but I can't remember what the other one was. So I apologize.
I think it was the natural card.
Oh, okay. So we were actually scheduled to have a meeting on Thursday, which we have canceled. And so we are hoping that they can provide you with a report at some point in the future.
You have the report.
No, I know you have the report. I mean, just provide you with an update of what they're working on. But right now, we've canceled, just, we have a, a few of our members who are elderly, and we don't want to endanger their health in any way, so.
I have two students, and we have four minutes.
I'm cognizant of the time. I was going to ask a question if we want to follow up, and it's actually, you'll probably want to weigh in on it. So I can ask- So I can ask it at the end of the board meeting or I'll put it out there now and we can cover it at the end of the, the three o'clock meeting. But I know we had all received, and I've heard this before, and I know there have been ongoing discussions about childcare and potentially asking to utilize our facilities or renting them out. And so, and interestingly enough, when you talked about STC, the soft open, I mean, I would call a soft opening, kind of giving us some, some perspective of what we may be approaching in fall. I don't know if there's, if we as a board can have some additional discussion as to what, if we would be interested in entertaining leasing out our facilities to any of these 501(c)(3)'s that, I know one had referenced, but I'm just going to say in broad, doesn't matter who it is, but as from a childcare, has childcare the right, summer programs, childcare? But that, you know, my understanding is that whilst our schools are closed, the local school district does have the authority to, to authorize them to be opened. However, I would want to make sure there is proper indemnification or whatever language in that rental agreement and making sure that whatever procedures they have in place is also vetted through the Department of Health. I mean, those would be my just initial things. But that, you know, whether or not the will of the board would be to authorize that. Maybe again, if we want to, given the time, we have three minutes left. I just want to put that out there and perhaps we can talk about three o'clock.
Sure.
Thanks.
Eric?
Two things. One, I just want to correct the record. Kelly Caldwell spoke on behalf of the referendum, pro referendum, at a South County Tiger Bay meeting. And Argus Foundation has donated to the, to the, to the referendum multiple times and so, same with its own individual members. I regret that, that people, they were singled out, but I just want to correct the record. But in the interest of time, Mitzi, if, at the end of the board meeting, if you can talk about contingency planning for August? I mean, we need to jump on this. I agree the pandemic snuck up on us, but August isn't sneaking up on us. We know that. What we don't know is what's going to be in place at that time. And so I don't think it's unreasonable for us to have some contingency plans. You know, if, if we're still in the same boat we're at now, what does that mean? If somehow or another the social distancing won phase two or phase three, at least they have delineated it so you would know. You know, you know, if we're in the same phases as us, or phase two, or phase, phase three is be open generally. If, if, I don't expect an answer, but I would hope that you could address at least preliminary, how those talks are going, what's the thought process and when we can expect those type of planning? Because people, I agree with Ms. Brown. People are, you know, questioning about graduation, but people are equally asking what's happening in August. Obviously, we don't know, but it'd be nice if we had some contingency plans so that people have some expectation as August gets closer. We know what phase we're in, so people have a better idea. Is that something you can address at the end of the board meeting? In the interest, I'm worried about time here.
Thirty thousand foot level, maybe.
Again, I don't expect you to have a plan. The question is, is how, how are we moving forward to, to, to develop those type of contingency plans? Is that, is that fair?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we might as well stay here one minute. Good morning, I mean, good afternoon, Mr. Hardy.
All right, you may want to watch the end of the Sky Inglewood workshop because it related to you. Some work for you.
Just Sky Inglewood. Good afternoon. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome you to the school board meeting this Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. Please stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Thank you. Actually, I have a number of things I want to talk to you about. But first, as you can see on the screen, we have a visitor. So I thought I would start with, with Craig. So it's my pleasure to introduce our new communications director, Craig Maniglia. Craig was chosen from a selection of candidates based on his education. He holds a communications degree from George Mason University and his past experience, most recently as a communication strategist with Fairfax County Schools, the 10th largest school system in the country. Jody and I both believe Craig has the ability to transition quickly into his new role and provide the district with key leadership in developing a strong communications plan that promotes Sarasota County Schools and the great work of its students and staff. So I'm going to turn it over to Craig and let him tell you a little bit more about himself.
Great, thank you, Mitzi. It's a pleasure to see some of you for the second time and some of you for the first time. But I'm really happy to be here. Although the circumstances are kind of strange. I told my wife I felt like I entered Twilight Zone because I have a new job, a new role and know people. Everybody's zooming in and it's an interesting dynamic. But one that I, when I left Fairfax County Public Schools, we were in the midst of the, you know, the Blackboard Ultra Communication and all kinds of ways to give to staff. So I'm somewhat used to it, but it is a little bit difficult with all the new technology that we're using here and trying to make it work that we're getting there. So a little bit about me, my wife and I have been wanting to get to the west coast of Florida forever, for at least 25 years. And this opportunity made it possible and we're, you know, we're really thankful. She's an educator as well. So she hopes to possibly work here for Sarasota County Schools as well once she leaves at the end of the school year up in Fairfax County. As, as Mitzi said, I, I do come from Fairfax County Public Schools, which is the 10th largest school system in the country. And we have 27,000 contracted employees. And in those employees, my role there was primarily strategic communications, but it was an outreach to the internal side of the organization. So not only did it involve the customer service outreach, which included onboarding, new employee hiring, it also involved, you know, surveys, implementation of surveys, feedback sessions going with individual people. So again, my communications career for education has a pretty wide brush from not only communicating video-wise, print-wise, web-wise, digital-wise, but also through strategically looking at data and trying to make sense out of it. Prior to that, I was the chief operating officer and creative director of a fairly sizable, nationally recognized communications firm. And in that role there, I was in charge of strategic communication, creative messaging. And we did a lot of presidential, gubernatorial, congressional races. So a lot inside of those were grassroots and, you know, issue advocacy things. So when I'm listening to your board meetings, I'm hearing a lot of, I'm hearing a lot of things that I may be able to lend a little bit of help to. But, you know, I look forward to that challenge because this is a whole different way of working than it is where I come from. I have also in that role as a COO of that communications firm. I launched and managed several networks like the National Geographic Channel, Discovery Channel, not only for their broadcast television needs, but also for creative direction and crisis management. So when things would go wrong, I would normally get a call and we'd work out a plan. So anyway, I, I just want to thank you all for entrusting me with this job. I know it wasn't an easy task. It's hard to bring someone in from outside, but I will work hard to get up to speed quickly. I have a fantastic crew. You know, my team here is fantastic. So I really look forward to getting to know them better and, you know, throwing my two cents in, but also gathering their 10 cents worth of knowledge. So thank you all for having me this, this afternoon. And if there's anything I can answer, any questions, I'd be more than happy to do so now.
Well, welcome. We're glad that you're on board and we know that you're going to be working hard. Bridgette?
No, I just wanted to say welcome. I, I am excited about this. I often say the communications piece is one of the most important roles. There's a lot of important roles in our district, but very, very excited to see you on board and I look forward to seeing you in person. But welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Great. Shirley? Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Shirley Brown here. I'd just like to say welcome also. I've heard some good things about you from some people who know you from back home and so.
That's always a plus, right?
Of course, they're going to be, you know, writing back to those people where you left and see how things might have changed in the last few years. But, you know, I really, really appreciate you coming here and we've got a big job for you and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Crawford?
Are we done? Thanks, Craig, appreciate it.
All right, awesome. Y'all have a nice afternoon.
You too.
Okay, so continuing on, I wanted to announce, it was announced at the school this morning at 10:00 a.m. So I'm not sure if you already know.
What happened at 10:00?
We were here. So, right, is it correct? So I'm not thinking you know, but I just wanted to let you know that Deborah Bisi from Alta Vista Elementary School was named the school-related employee of the year for Sarasota County Schools. Again, a little bit different, you know, we're not having the, the luncheon. Deborah Bisi from Alta Vista Elementary School was named the school-related employee of the year for Sarasota County Schools. Yay. So, so just a little bit about Deborah. She's served as Dr. Barbara Shirley's administrative assistant for the last 15 years. She is known, or her office area is known as the hub of the school. She's been instrumental in, even back in 2012 when we were first establishing summer learning academies at Alta Vista. That's where it all started. And she's been real instrumental in that programming and, and just keeping that school humming. So I just wanted to congratulate her on her honor and let you guys know that that's what it is since we won't be having a luncheon.
I know.
Some other things I wanted to share with you. I received an email from Wilkinson Elementary. Mrs. Nations received an email from Angela Slayback, who wanted to make sure that her principal knew that all of the teachers and staff there of, just, are deserving of kudos. Her son Davian is a student in Ms. Johnson's classroom. Unfortunately, the pandemic has created quite a few difficulties for us and his teacher's gone above and beyond to accommodate him. She's always successful and willing to do whatever it takes for him to be successful. We're in frequent communications and brainstorm together for solutions. And then it says on another note, Ms. Kathy from the cafeteria just called to wish Davian a happy birthday. It actually brought tears to my eyes because it was so thoughtful. His journey through school thus far has been very challenging and I'm just so grateful that you have all accepted him and love him for who he is. So I thought that was awesome. I have a couple of other items. We were notified last Friday that we were named officially a Florida FESTA Challenge MVP district for the 2019-20 school year. This means that your district had one of the highest student completion rates for the free application for federal student aid in the state. So great news, good, good work on the, that's a joint effort with the community, I mean, the education foundation. So congratulations to all of those involved. And then I received yesterday from Comcast, Jen Boyett, four students in Sarasota County Schools were named winners of Comcast's annual leaders and achievers scholarship. And they're Jillian Alexander, Janelle Colombo, Kaylee Combo and Daniel Stoss, all of Venice High School. So congratulations to them. That was a great thing to hear. And then I received an email today about some arts awards. So I'll get some more information about that and tell you about that on the second. But there's still lots of great things happening here, even though we're closed. And then I just wanted to ask, is Denise waiting? Do you know? Okay, so if Denise could get on, that would be great. So we've, there's been lots of questions about how effective has distance learning been? Have we been reaching our students and so on and so forth? So part of this reorganization that you guys have authorized, this is some of the good work that's coming out of this. So they have developed a dashboard that provides us with data on unique logs, logins. We have logins into the My Account, logins into Blackboard, logins into, I mean, there's more data here than you can imagine. So I'm really excited. I'm hoping that Denise can join us and share that information with you. Nope, that's not him.
Coming on, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I can't see you.
Hold on one minute, I got to remove this and I have it up.
Okay.
Blocking it, hold on. Okay, can you see the dashboard?
Yeah. Can you make it a little bigger?
How's it look now? Is it larger?
It looks, it looks great now, thank you.
Okay, so as we moved into the remote learning environment quickly, we wanted to have a way that we can start monitoring how we were doing and how were students interacting with us. So from the very beginning, we started and needed a way to monitor our computer distribution, which is tab one over here. But before I go any further, I have to thank some folks. This was a lot of work because something like this, you cannot purchase, you cannot buy it anywhere. You have to depend on your staff to build it. So there are, I want to thank George Goodfeller, Joe Binzwanger, Eric Showalter, Colin Enos, Todd Alexander, Adam Gardner and Jamal. And I probably missed some people. But also a very special thank, thank you to James Barara, a very, a young man working down South and Northport who ultimately got all those data feeds and this is what you see. So we wanted to see, when we were distributing dashboard, computers, devices from the very beginning, how many were we going to distribute and who was going to get them? We needed to, if, if you picked up a computer at a specific school, it didn't necessarily mean it came from that school because we were distributing the computers that were going to be removed and refreshed this year. So the older computers first. So if you look up top, you can see that we, we distributed or a computer were received by 9,955 students. As a typical dashboard that we do, we keep things consistent. And the very top here, you can barely see it, but you have filters. We're able to see, if we pick a school, how many students received computers at that school. We're able to see how many ESE students, how many in every grade. So we really tagged and mapped everything that went on with the computer distribution because we wanted not only to be able to know where we were giving things, who we were giving things to so we could track them, but also because we wanted to see are there any pattern in these events? So if you look here at our distribu, if you click on any one of these here, you have a breakdown by time. We're able to see what was the biggest distribution times during the day. We realized, I think very early when we started hearing about the virus and understanding that we would have to move fast, that we really wanted to capture as much data about how we distribute and collect. So this was our computer, our first distribution dashboard. We did a very similar thing for hotspots. We know the connectivity is important. We wanted to monitor again where there was not connectivity We wanted to monitor again where there was not connectivity and what could we do to get that. We quickly, we had, Joe Binzwanger had 180 hotspots that went out very quickly, and then after that, we started distributing. We found as we were going, going through time that students, because Comcast and other vendors started making their services more available, that not as many students needed them as the beginning. So we're continuously monitoring that to see and make sure that we reach all. So after the hardware was distributed, the next thing we wanted to view is to see, well, how are we making these connections? Are our students, we've made things available, they should have computers, hopefully they have internet now, are our teachers able to reach the kids and are the students responding and logging in? So you see here is we have an application, it is sort of a portal, if you will, that again, was custom-built here, My Sarasota County Schools login, and we wanted to keep track of who was logging in. And so within that portal are many applications to other computer programs such as Brainpop and numerous others, digital textbooks and other resources. So if a student was working and going through and into our portal, we would know and we would flag it. So brilliantly with these guys, we said, well, were they logging in as unique users? So the black line shows you if there was a unique student logging in. The green line will say how many times anybody logged in, so one student logging in multiple times. So if you look up here, very important statistic, we had 97% of students logging in to mine. We don't know what applications they were getting, we can't get that level of data, but we do know they were in there. Now, if you look at ESC, it's a little bit less, but we have to remember that many of our ESC students also had packets, so they wouldn't necessarily be logging in this way. But still is fairly high. And then the percentage of our ELL. If you wanted to dig deeper, if a principal of a particular school wanted to monitor their school's data, they could go in by school and see who was accessing things through mine. There's also some nice features like date ranges here. Again, if you look here, we had over 70,000 entries into the portal on this day of April 6th. We can see the hours in which children were logging in, which is another wonderful thing for us to understand as we go and we enter this world of remote learning, whether it continues or not, but we still have a very good idea about when students are going in to do their work. And that was 70, 70,000 entries, but 29,000 unique users. If we go forward to Apex, oh, I missed Blackboard, I'm sorry. If we go into Blackboard, we have similar, now when you see these flattened counts here, most of this was spring break. And then we see it really coming back on March 29th, March 30th. So Blackboard had 68.86. Remember, Blackboard is a program that you could build out, it's our learning management system in Sarasota County. Many students have full-blown courses within Blackboard or they use it as partial of their classroom instruction. They may post their children's assignments here. But we can also see very high numbers of students logging in multiple times and then 16,000 on April 1st logging in at least one time during that day. And again, more activity with Blackboard in the higher high school and middle school where they have full-blown courses in Blackboard. Apex is another system that we use at middle school and high school. You can see it's a similar pattern that, you know, you can see this was all spring break here and then we see, and this program has less usage because Apex is truly used mostly at high school, some, and middle school, not elementary school. But again, we know how many people had, or how many students were logging in, and if you go into, and we hover over, it's not working. Oh, there it goes. Up, and we hover over, we can see during which time of day most of the students are doing their work. So we have some late-night students in all of these applications, but the majority of students are logging in early hours, 8, 9, 10 o'clock, that's when. We also, in this application, we can see the green bars say the average amount of time they're spending all across the district within the application. And then I think we're all familiar with this application. This is Zoom. This has been one of our easiest cells. Most of our teachers and administrators and district personnel, obviously we're doing it right now, are using Zoom. We went, we, this is an application where we can only get back to April 29th. Remember, most of these data feeds weren't readily available. We had to work through the backend, the programmers to pull out this information, and we were only permitted to get back to April 29th on this one. But it's interesting, if you look here on April 29th, there were 14, 14, 26 unique hosted users that day, but we had 2785 Zoom occurrences. So it's a heavily-used product. The average membership on that Zoom was 12.2. So we are able, if we dig down into this data, to see who actually hosted the meetings so we could, a principal could look and see which of his teachers are having Zoom meetings and when. So this is a work in progress. This is our sneak peek. We haven't released it, it's been private. We've only released it to Cabinet and to Laura Kingsley's group of executive directors and have been studying it. We're going to add Teams, that's another communication product we use quite frequently. And this is our way in addition to two other ways. We also have distributed surveys, staff surveys, parent surveys, and will soon release a student survey so that we can gain lots of, almost a 360 view of how we are doing in our remote learning process. So do you have any questions?
Come on, sorry.
Hello?
Yeah.
Hold on, I'm trying, I'm queuing them. Bridget?
Denise, this is awesome, I mean, this is really, really amazing. Thank you so much for putting that together. I think even in what Eric had mentioned as far as contingency plans and trying to figure out what the future looks like and us not knowing so much, but this really, I think, is really going to be valuable as we illustrate what our options are and how effective this has been. I can tell you from my end as the kindergarten mom and all of the different applications, and it's fascinating to see how effective a lot of them were. And I mean, effective isn't a broad term, but you know, the frequency of login, but I, I love this. And you guys built this from scratch, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. The gentlemen and women that we talked about earlier, these are the folks that pulled all the data from the backend and young James Barraro pushed it all together and put it into this graphic design. So yes, all our employees did a wonderful job.
Yes, kudos, I love it. Thank you so much for sharing.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Brown?
I, too, want to thank you for this information and, you know, and of course, if the FDOE ever want to get back to us and say, did you really, you know, spend your time with those students? We surely can show that. But I frankly am surprised at how many students really did participate. And you look at those scales and it showed Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and you know, and it was working. I mean, so they, they were engaged during the week and I, and I think that's a wonderful thing that you showed us. Again, yeah, thank you. It was very, very, very interesting. It'd be interesting to-
Our teachers are very hardworking and administrators.
Yeah. Now, the principals, I know, will be able to go into their schools. Will the teachers be able to go by their class or is it just by the school?
We've gotten it down to the school level right now. We'll see what kind of further changes we could make to dig into it. And it's really all about that, making the learning process more transparent to the users, to make sure that we can engage kids if we're missing a child. Why are we missing a child? Are they not able to log in? Those kinds of things are next. How can we get deeper?
Yeah, yeah, because if we're going to be, you know, continuing this on to next year, either full or part-time, we'll want to know and, you know, to be able to know on the, on the classroom level and then even on the student level, how much time. But thank you very much, very informative. And I doubt that there's many schools out there that have this kind of information. It's wonderful.
Mrs. Cantalupo, fantastic. You and your team did a great job.
Yeah, I'll give the kudos to the team.
All of you.
Believe me, they're wonderful people.
Well, it takes a good leader to have a good team.
Well, thank you.
So thank you.
So, yeah, we're hoping that between the survey results that come in with this dashboard data, that we can then determine what programs worked well, what ones do the students prefer, which ones do the teachers prefer, so that in the, you know, unfortunate event, we would ever have to go back to this or we have to continue doing this, we would know what direction to go in in the fall. So that is providing some great data back to us.
That's great.
And I just tell you, when I saw this, I was so impressed and I'm like, okay, I'm adding it to the superintendent's report, so I hope you're ready to present. So she scrambled a little bit, but she's done a great job. So it looks, it's wonderful. So thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
That's it. Next is our hearing of citizens. And as we've been doing since we've been on Zoom, emails have come to us as, from our constituents, and they will be placed on the agenda and become part of the minutes.
There, Madam Chair, there is one of, in here was a public records request, but in, it's a public records request.
Yeah, well, we don't-
I'm not responding to it, I'm just wanting to make sure it was received as that as well, just for clarity. When we have a minute just to double-check?
Yes, I saw it yesterday. Were there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, the instructional classified personnel report had an addendum and the CARES Act funding for higher ed that I mentioned to you is actually being moved to a future addenda due to finalizing some information.
Thank you. Have a motion?
I move for approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Please vote.
Oh.
Oh, comments? Which student is it?
Well, I'll comment while I'm getting up to the board meeting, I'm still in the work section. You know, in the employee report, we've got a lot of employees that the end of the year are retiring that have been with us for a long time and, or some taking early retirement now because of things. And, you know, we can't have a retirement party for them here, but, you know, we really do want to thank them for all the years they've put in with us and all the hard work they've given us and we just really appreciate the work they're doing for us, or they have. Thank you.
Let me put this out there before I forget it. When we, we used to honor the retirees, we'd have a dinner for them or a celebration for them. And then we would take, the superintendent would take a picture with the retirees. And then we just disbanded that, we no longer do that. But I have to tell you that the retirees really were upset. They liked the fact that they were, had a special time, that they were celebrated and they got an opportunity to take a picture with the superintendent. So for the future, if you want to think about that, put that in a hopper, because I won't be here, so put that in a hopper for next year so that you can remember to do that, or at least consider it, that they really valued that special attention that they got. Shirley?
One other thing that was in there was item 19, and that was the grant for the CARES Act funding for Suncoast Technical College.
That was moved.
$500,000.
That was moved.
Oh, moved, I'm sorry, we're not ready. Well, hopefully, we'll get that taken care of because that will provide funding for some students coming up next year.
Yes.
And like we talked about earlier at the workshop, that we're going to be opening some of those classes up there, that'll be our first place, that we'll be testing. So, yes, let's work forward.
Okay, please vote. And the vote is five to zero, it passes. No items polled for comment. New business, item 32.
I move the approval of new job description for supervisor of programming and data analytics as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think this is part of the reorg that we were talking about this morning where they combine jobs and move things around.
Mm-hmm, yes.
That's exactly what all of them are.
Item 33.
Move the approval of new job description for supervisor of research, state reporting, and evaluation as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Again, part of that reorg and-
Waiting for the vote to come up. Please vote. Item 34.
Move that we approve the new job description for programming and data analyst as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Part of the reorg we talked about at workshop.
The top one didn't come up. And the vote was, and the vote was five to zero, it passes. Item 36.
I move that we approve the new job description for supervisor of student information.
35.
35.
Excuse me, I went ahead of myself. You're right.
That's what it says.
You're right.
Second.
On my thing.
May I have a second?
Second?
Second.
Okay. No discussion, please vote. Item 36.
A move for approval of the superintendent's search citizen advisory committee rules of procedure as presented.
May I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Those members who will be appointed can get this on the superintendent's search-
On the website?
On the website, under superintendent's search information.
And the vote passes, five to zero. Item number 37.
Move that the school board approve the superintendent's search citizens advisory committee list as presented.
Second.
Each board member was, had five people to appoint and that list will be either attached to this and on the superintendent's search dropdown on the, on the website.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Yeah, I just wanted to add and thank, I'm excited about this list of people. I think there's a really big group of community members and I want to say thank you for those who are willing to serve on this because I know a lot of people are really busy at this current time, but understanding how important this discussion and search is. So just wanted to share my appreciation.
Sure. Mrs. Brown?
I'd just like to clarify that the search committee will be reviewing all of the applications that come in. I think we've had about a dozen that have come in so far. They will reviewing all the ones that come in through May 29th and they will be meeting on the second and then again on the ninth and will be making a presentation. They'll be narrowing the field down and giving us their recommendations for the finalists and then we, or the semifinalists, and then we will narrow it down. This committee won't actually choose, they're just narrowing the field down for the board to then choose the finalists.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Please vote. And the vote passes, five to zero. Any further comments?
I do.
Mrs. Goodwin?
I was talking to some of our charter schools and in particular to Steve Crump from his Suncoast out east, and they had a drive-by for students one afternoon late at 5:00, I guess, and the teachers were strategically positioned every other space in the parking lot and the students could drive by and say, hi, Ms. Smith, hi, Mr. Brown, or whatever. And they expected to have 45 or 50 people, they had 350 people. And what, they expected to last 45 minutes lasted over two hours, so it really was quite a successful event. And I guess many schools have been doing that kind of thing and it's been a great opportunity for our students.
Mr. Robinson?
Superintendent Corcoran, I have a question for you. Do I need to reiterate my question or do you still remember it?
No, no, so this is about, I guess, so to mention that we've had a couple of conversations about it, and we are going to be looking quite a bit at- Oh, sorry. Looking quite a bit at the STC model and how they've been able to incorporate, again, their classes are like nine firefighters, so it's pretty easy for them to be able to stay within the guidelines. But we begin Thursday, we had a task force at the very beginning of the pandemic that had Susie DeBose and it had members from the Health Department, Michael Drummond and Chuck Henry, and so we are now reconstituting that again to begin the process for, because that was the process to plan for what does stuff look like. And then when we went into the full-blown pandemic, that particular committee kind of-
that particular committee kind of ended. We went into all of our own staff. You know, it's been a very interesting, super fast, but very long two months between going from status quo to full-blown distance learning to planning for the summer. What are we doing for graduation? So I'm kind of chunking it like one month at a time. So we've got June kind of handled. At this particular point, short of there being some drastic changes in the governor's thought process on where we are and our phasing, I'm still thinking that our campuses, for the most part, will still remain closed in the month of June. We're doing all of our summer delivery of services virtually. We have had requests, though, from outside entities to use our facilities in an abbreviated version of a summer programming, childcare camps, you know, whatever it is. Again, we'd have to look at it. Also, if we get to the point in July, how much access would we ultimately have to make sure our campuses are sanitized and clean if our kids are coming back? So I have some concerns about letting someone else on our campuses to use it, even if they're paying for it, if it then does not allow our own staff to be able to get in there and make sure that it's sanitized and clean to a level that we would be comfortable if our children were to re-enter. So we are beginning the process. Actually, it's Thursday afternoon. We have the meeting scheduled, the first meeting scheduled. We'll be meeting weekly. We have, we are going to be relying heavily on the guidance of the Health Department and the CDC for our decision-making on what our classroom spaces might look like if we are to return. And then if it is still everyone needs to remain six feet apart, then what is the next step? Do we go to a hybrid model? Do we go to multiple sessions in a day? What will we look like? And those are all of the things that we still have to cull out. We're just really happy we got a couple of facilities locked down for graduation ceremony. So we're now ready to move to the next phase. So unfortunately, I have less answers, unfortunately, than questions still. But the hope is, is that as each week progresses, we'll get clearer and clearer on what direction we need to go.
And I'm sure Ms. Ziegler would like to know if you figured out a way to keep four-year-olds six feet apart. I'm sure she would like to know how you did that.
Well, and that's the other thing, too. When you have young children, they don't know what the words "social distancing" mean. And, you know, so especially if they get back in a classroom where they haven't seen their friends in a really long time. The first thing they're going to do is go run and hug their friends. And then the concern becomes, we had this conversation at Cabinet, if it's mandatory that they wear masks and take their temperatures, what is that going to look like? And a mask, $1.50, no big deal, right? Except for, these aren't reusable, they're disposable. And so if you say all staff and all children have to wear a mask, I just did a round number, I think I did 45,000. And 180 days, just student days, it's $12 million, over $12 million. $12,150,000. So, correct. So if you can get them, I mean, hand sanitizer, $8 or more for a bottle, 12-ounce bottle. So again, the price gouging is kind of occurring. I mean, we have a good supplier and good supplies, but, you know, we'll be stocking a little bit of these things in our warehouse for our employees to be able to have access to. But if it comes to us having to provide it for our student population, I mean, someone suggested make it part of their return-to-school supply list. Again, you know, if you're making it mandatory, you really should be providing it. So that becomes a fine line of whether or not you make it mandatory because it becomes a very expensive item to have to provide over time. It doesn't seem like it would be very much, it just.
Whatever it is, we can handle.
Yeah.
Well, a problem with.
Surely wait. Mrs. Ziegler?
Well, are you done?
Yeah, I just look forward to future updates. This is something that.
Yeah, every time we talk, we'll.
I look forward to future updates as it develops. I'm glad that you guys are meeting Thursday. This is something that I'm really concerned about in the community is to.
No, I agree.
No, I echo that. And I know I've said, that is, yeah, I feel like we ask, but I also want to talk through what, I mean, so we're not blindsiding you necessarily, but that each meeting, if we have kind of each what this would look like, what this would look like, what this would look like. And I know it's an unknown, you know, is there a particular date? At what point would we say, OK, come July X? Do we, you know, what you continue what the Health Department's recommending or the CDC, do we? I don't know. So I think having the various options out there but at least allows people to figure out what next steps. But there's a lot embedded in there financially. Going back to what I had brought up as far as just the rental, and I know you talked about that from the facility standpoint. I didn't, I just, I know that I had talked to Jacob, I always get Jose and Jacob Oliva this morning just to confirm, you know, are schools closed pursuant to DOE or the governor's executive order or not? And he confirmed that at this point, based on the phasing, that each county has the ability to make that determination, and with good advice, saying that, however, make sure while you do that, if you were to go down that route, I mean, because, you know, we work with the Health Department so that we're following those guidelines. And then, you know, with the advice of council, I'll work with them to figure out what that looks like. You know, I think you raise a good point of, we want to make sure it's accessible to our staff, you know, to prepare, whatever that may look like. But at the same time, from a macro standpoint, these are facilities supported by taxpayer dollars, and they're not, I mean, a lot of them are, they're mostly empty. And that, you know, child, this is an incredibly important part of helping people get back to work is being able to where to put their kids. And so if we can help play a role there, but also manage the risks appropriately, I wanted to see what the board thought because it would really, and my understanding is that it would be, it would take the board to say, yes, we're OK with that. And since, so that's, that is my question. But I would like to see something, or at least try, if we can, to assist. Does anyone else have any?
You'll respond? I'll respond. I'm not in favor of opening schools right now. I'm really not. I, there's, you know, at first, we thought that little ones weren't affected by it, but now we know that they are. It just manifests itself in a different way. And they also take their germs and carry them home to their parents. And there is no such thing with kids of wearing a mask or social distancing or using, I mean, reality and cleaning their hands with sanitizer. It's just not a fact. At this point, I'm not, I'm not happy, I'm not in favor of doing that.
You're talking about to lease it out to any of the.
Leasing it out.
Not opening our schools, I'm talking about leasing.
No, I'm not in favor of leasing it out either.
OK, I just want to make sure.
I'm not, no. Mrs. Brown?
The CDC has put out something on when it's opening schools. And the first question, the first, should you consider reopening? And the one on there is, are you able to screen students and employees upon arrival for symptoms and history of exposure? And like you said, you know, do we screen them when they get on the bus or when they get off the bus? And, you know, how are you going to, how are you going to do that and all of that? And that's, you know, a lot of people think, well, just send them to school. We can do it as they come in. No, we can't, you know, because there is that question, on the bus or off the bus. And you talked about, you know, the hand sanitizers. My daughter teaches kindergarten, and one of the things they ask the kids to do is bring in a bottle of hand sanitizer at the beginning of the year. This was before the COVID-19, and there was just these little bottles. Having those 18 little bottles of hand sanitizers in her room got her written up by the fire department because they're flammable, and that was too much that they could have in a room. I mean, so there's just so many, it's not as easy as we think it is. You know, you can't just have every parent bring in a bottle, if they could even get one. But there's just so many things that you have to consider. And until we can make sure that every kid that comes onto the campus, you know, doesn't have a fever, and I think what parents can be doing right now is this summer, don't be getting on any planes or leaving the country because, you know, we don't want to, you know, have yourself exposed again and then have to be going through this all over again. But we have made arrangements to postpone the in-person graduations till July, hopefully. Hopefully, our seniors will be able to have a graduation and an end of your dance. And you've got programs in place that are going to take care of those students who may be falling behind on the learning that they're getting now. So we're going to have some sort of a summer school in July and/or for those seniors who are missing a half-credit or whatever to patch that up. And I really appreciate that you've put all that together. We've done a lot. And we're not just sitting here.
Still working.
Social distancing, you are doing a lot. And I really appreciate what all you're doing. But to the public, the employers have to understand, it's not as easy as opening the door.
All right. Mr. Robinson?
I just want to make sure that we clarify. We're not talking about opening up schools. We're not talking about students. We're not talking about graduation. We're not, I don't think that that's what the question was, correct? Right, there's a question. I agree with Ms. Brown that if it was about that, then I would agree.
I answered her question. I was talking globally.
Oh, globally, OK. But I agree with Ms. Brown that if it was about opening up schools, then that's a no-brainer. I would, I would hope that, since we have given the superintendent emergency powers, that if we have, if we have gone into Phase Two, or that there's more loosening of restrictions in the global economy as a whole, because we're not in the same place we were 30 days ago, yet the school district is in the same place it was 30 days ago, but the restrictions are not the same place. And so, and I'm not saying that the restrictions now are enough. But if the restrictions in a couple of weeks loosen up even more, then keeping us at the same place you were, you know, 30 days ago may need to be revisited. Not, again, not asking for opening up schools, but there are people like volleyball practice, football practice. There are students, there are people who want to rent space. There are people who want to do activities on the district. And I would just hope that the superintendent monitors the situation, sees what's the governor's orders, the executive orders, what the Florida Department of Health is saying, and to react appropriately based upon the guidance of the Florida Department of Health, Sarasota Department of Health, CDC, the executive branch, the federal government and local government. Because as they reduce restrictions, I would hope that you are cognizant of that and respond accordingly.
I am. I would be very concerned about contact sports.
Yes.
Student-on-student, because there are students that are going to be playing. And again, you know, even though it's not our schools that are open, those who would be renting for childcare still have our students in our facilities, just maybe not in a learning environment. I mean, I think that that's why we chose to do the summer programming in June, virtually, with the hope that our schools could potentially, our campuses could hopefully reopen in July, that the restrictions are relaxed, hence why we've got the planned graduation ceremonies in the month of July. Again, we'll be monitoring it, taking the lead from the Health Department and CDC, and opening up as soon as we think we can safely do so. But I wouldn't say we would do it before.
Those emergency powers, they end the end of May, is that correct? May 29? Yes. May 29? June 30, not May 30? OK. I'd like to check on that, please. Mrs. Ziegler?
Just the reason I wanted to see from the board, because, I mean, and I understand you have the emergency powers. And I know that this is kind of, you know, there's a, the rapid speed of decision-making, but this one's a little heavier. And I want, that's why I wanted, in fairness to you, to see what the will of the board was, if there is a way to help support the community. But I mean, there's both sides of it. I do think, I know that there are programs already in place. They're practicing, they're working with the Health Department. I just see how many families are struggling, and as employers start to open up and they don't have programs to or know where to put their students or kids. And I understand there oftentimes are students. And if they're, that's difficult. And so if there is a way that we can help, and I, that's again why I wanted the board to help kind of send some guidance of where we would do, what their opinion is. And then in that aspect, have some clearance of, OK, if we're, if a majority are OK with evaluating it, and then looking at the circumstances at which we could potentially do that. I know you raised some concerns about, you know, our staff going in there and how long would they be in there? But I also think it also provides us some, a window into some good practices. I mean, yes, it could go the other way, but I'm going to be optimistic and say it could give us some good practices that also help us going into a fall opening as well. So that's what I was seeking from the board and then to talk through. If it's not a majority interested, then I won't waste the time in asking Art and you and a variety of other, from the legal standpoint, I mean, how would we protect, right? So not the indemnification, all of that. Because I know there's a number of risks there, but if families know that. So that is where my question was. I don't know if we got.
I understood your question. And I was a working mother with two children. So I do understand not having someplace to put your child when you have to go to work. I get that. But at the same time, I would not want to expose our staff to the dangers of this virus. I just wouldn't want to do it. And unless we could be absolutely sure, as Shirley read from the guidelines, that they were covered, that we knew for sure that people coming in were not infected, I would never have a problem with it. But I do have a problem with just opening them up and not having, not following those guidelines. I'm sorry.
Well, and I'm hoping if we get to the point where we feel like we're opening up, that our other childcare centers that have closed will reopen. And that will also help hopefully be able to provide a relief valve. So, you know, right now, we've got so many childcare centers that are closed. So the options are quite limited for our families right now. But.
Well, I think you'd also look at the county parks department. I mean, if they're going to open up their summer programs, the city, I mean.
They sent out, they sent out an email. It's a very abbreviated version of summer camp.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry, they've opened, they sent out a notification today. They're doing an abbreviated version. There's no adventure camp. They, I don't know, I kind of gradually read through it earlier, but. Yeah, it's a slow opening, and it's very, and it's quite abbreviated from what it normally is. It's not quite the robust program that my kids participated in. So, yeah.
Well, I trust Mitzi to make that determination based on, you know, what the CDC recommendations are and what the program is that's coming through. But it is, it's, you know, that one-on-one contact sports that we got to look at. And I know that, I trust Mitzi to make the best decision. I've seen her so far, and.
We have a couple of requests to utilize our facilities just because in the terms of social distancing, their facility isn't large enough. So they'd like to access the closest facility to their facility in order to be able to utilize that. If we can get to that point and we can accommodate them, we'd love to do that. I'm just not positive that we can do that today in the middle of May. And the issue is, of course, all of these things, just like we want to know what we're doing in August, require planning. So if they want to do something in July, they need to plan sooner rather than later. And at this point, I don't know that we can commit to something like that. That's all.
I agree. I agree. Thank you. All right. The next board meeting is scheduled for June 2 at 3:00 PM. And we are adjourned. OK. Well, I was calling you.